Alright, good afternoon. It is 6:00 PM, Monday, January 25th, 2021. It's the Town of Rutland Board of Selectment meeting. I hereby call this meeting to order. At this point in the meeting, I will entertain a motion to waive the announcement of open meeting recordings if the board is so moved.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none will have a roll call vote. Stillings.
Stillings aye.
Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
Whitman.
Whitman, aye.
Clark.
Aye.
And Rositi, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Next on the agenda, we have minutes, treasury warrant and payroll. Entertain a motion to approve treasury warrant 21- W15 and payroll 21-PW15.
So moved. Second stillings.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none will have a roll call vote. Stillings.
Stillings aye.
Nichols. Again, can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I said I excluding any COA wages.
Okay, Whitman.
Whitman, aye.
Clark.
Aye.
And Rositi, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Entertain a motion next to the approval of meeting minutes from the 11th of January 2021.
So moved. Second, quick discussion.
Motion and a second for discussion. Jeff, go ahead.
Just a couple of typos. I believe Chris Kolofsky spelling on his name and Ron Sanangelo. Unless it's St. Angelo.
Okay.
Jeff, do you know the correct spelling of Chris's last name?
I think it's a F instead of a T.
Oh, okay. Sure. And then I misspelled Ron's name somewhere in there?
Uh, well, Ron, it's not St. Angelo, correct?
No.
San Angelo, yeah.
Okay, that was my error. I will fix both of them.
Sure.
Thank you.
Alright, so a motion, both of you amend, amenable to amending the motion to include those edits?
Yep.
Jeff?
Yes, sir.
So we have a motion and a second, including those edits. Any further discussion? Hearing none will have a roll call vote. Stillings.
Stillings aye.
Nichols. Whitman.
Nichols, aye. I'm sorry. It's not working.
Whitman.
Whitman, aye.
Clark.
Aye.
And Rositi, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Next on the agenda, we have public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? If you are, please use the raise your hand in the Zoom feature and Peter will let you in. I don't see anybody. I'm assuming that means we don't have anyone here for public comment. If at any point you would like to circle back to this, please raise your hand in the Zoom feature and we'll give you the appropriate time. If time allows.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I apparently can't raise my hand being the host of the meeting.
Oh, that's correct, Peter. You did, you did request some time, so I will give you the floor, sir.
Thank you very much. Lady and gentlemen of the board, good evening. My name is Peter Crane. I live at Nate's Way. And I'm here to discuss with you the Community Preservation Act. The town tried to pass the CPA, I think about 12 years ago, and it was defeated quite badly at town meeting. The town administrator and I had a recent discussion about it, and I thought we should at least discuss bringing it up again at town meeting. I'm having this discussion with CONCOM, with Planning and AGCOM, and obviously the Select Board. And if any of those boards don't agree that it's the right thing to pursue, I'm not going to pursue it. But if we all do agree that it should be done, that, then we'll start moving towards getting a warrant article at this annual town meeting. For those who don't know, the Community Preservation Act provides local and state funding so that towns can preserve open space and historic sites, create affordable housing, and develop outdoor recreational facilities. Now, in the past few years, we've seen a number of properties come out of 61A. One in particular, I'm thinking about that the town really wanted to go after, but we just didn't have the financial wherewithal to do so. The only way, in my opinion, with our funding structure today is to fund a purchase of property, or do some of the other things allowed by the CPA, is to set aside money for it somehow. The Community Preservation Act adds a surcharge up to 3% on the property taxes. I am not going to suggest that we that we add 3% on to people's property taxes, but that's the downside. And I think the big reason that it failed last time was that it was completely presented as an increase to everybody's taxes with no serious discussion about the benefits of it. There's also, by the way, some money from the state on top of whatever we'd appropriate from our own property tax funds. The purpose of this is not to ask you to discuss it this evening. That's not appropriate since it's not on your agenda. I'm raising this now so that you can put it on a future agenda and actually have a formal discussion and decide as a board if you think it's the right approach for the town to take, given all the positives and negatives that go with it. It does require another committee to be formed, another account to be maintained, and it does impact both the Open Space and Recreation Plan and the Master Plan. That's really all I have to say for it. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them to the best of my ability right now.
Ron, you have your hand.
Yeah, first, just a quick question. I'll make a few comments about my experience with it. You, if I'm aware, you said 3%, but you can do anywhere from a half a percent to 3%, right? So part of a warrant article could be, you know, what percentage would be recommended for the town? Is that correct?
That is correct, and I am not going to suggest what that percent would be until we get buy-in. I think there are several steps that we would have to go through to make sure that we're doing the right thing. And one of those is that decision process. And I would actually expect more input from this board on that decision than, say, CONCOM, who doesn't really have direct information about property taxes and assessments and all of that.
So I can only speak from my experience in Hanson, Massachusetts. I found as town administrator that it was a great program in terms of benefits for the town, particularly in recreation was extremely important. It helped us to make significant improvements to the fields in town and open space. I think it was a big advantage for that as well. Just putting in simple things like a park bench for somebody to sit at. You know, maybe some sidewalk paths in a park or recreation area. Probably could have been used for the woods roof to fix the roof on that building that we're trying to figure out where we get grants from. I would suggest that we start off low and let people get used to it and see the benefits. I think 3% would go down in flames, but maybe 1% or half a percent at least to start us out. And I don't, I think it's always a good idea when you can get state funds and there's a state contribution to it. So I think it's good. I think anytime you talk about taxes, nobody likes it, but I think once they saw the actual benefits in terms of the environment and, you know, how it would improve fields for their children or anything else, the benefits are really, really good once you see them come. And he's right, you need a committee. And they would make all the decisions on how the money is spent. And it's pretty much used in small towns across the state. A ton of towns have it, and I think most towns truly enjoy the benefits of the program. So it's something I could support at a reasonable level of increase. But it's something we would have to do a good job selling at town meeting why this is worthwhile for the community.
Or even before, I would submit that we would want to do some information sessions in advance to really sell the project or the use of it. But as I say, I'd like to get your input when this can be a formal agenda item so that you all can decide if you think it's worth supporting or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Does anybody have any comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks, Peter. I was just gonna say, I have, I'm sure Ron has a lot of resources. Also, I have a lot of resources from MMA a couple of years ago. It was, I had brought it to AGCOM when we were still doing liaisons and everything and had that conversation, started that conversation with AGCOM, but they weren't very amenable, just seeing automatically assuming that it was an increase in taxes and kind of that was full stop. So there, I think we do need the buy-in, but I have some contacts, resources. I'm sure Ron has also, so I'm happy to pass along.
Great, thank you.
Alright, so a couple of things, and then I think we as a board can dictate how we want to move this forward. Just for some background, about 50% of communities in the Commonwealth have adopted the CPA, which is the Community Preservation Act. Majority of those are towns. And basically, this allows us access, or would, one of the benefits to greater state funding that's put aside for this measure. And just for some quick math, if the town were to adopt a half a percent, comes out to probably on average around $15 for a property assessment, I believe, in the town. Would that, that sounds about right? Math-wise?
Yeah, that's for $300,000 house, sure.
So basically, there's obviously pros and cons, and I think what would be best, Peter, obviously, you know, I certainly respect everything you do for the town, so when you bring an issue to us, I certainly want to give it the full weight and measure. I know you've had these conversations with the other boards. I think what would be beneficial is if between now and two weeks from now, our next meeting, Ron, you could put together perhaps a cheat sheet for the board if the board is amenable, that can provide us with just some, you know, point information for a more detailed conversation. We can have that more detailed conversation as an agenda item, Peter, two weeks from now. And then if it's something that the board wants to explore, I think it would be important at that point to bring in FinCom and perhaps Planning, because I know that these issues are going to tie into our master plan process as well as our growth management study that was completed a couple of years ago. Is that amenable to all the board members having a discussion in two weeks? Leah, go ahead.
I wonder if it's worth bringing in either the assessors or Becky or somebody just for any of the tax questions or anything, or maybe that's a conversation if we decide to move forward, but that was just kind of my thinking.
I don't think that at this point I'll have it wrongly, and I don't think that's necessary. You know, the act itself, you have discretion. It's going to be a levied amount against real property value in addition to what's already being paid. So the math and the numbers are pretty straightforward in terms of what that fiscal impact could be in the community, which is why I think, Peter, you know, you know the history more than I do. Probably why it fails in a lot of communities, because, you know, half a percent, you know, people might view as something that's worth it. 3% in today's current economic climate with the assessed value of homes, that's, that's a lot of money. So I can certainly understand why folks would be skeptical. So Ron, is that kind of your impression too?
Yeah, well, exactly. What I could do is I can get the Assessors Office, the Tax Select or whatever, just, you know, say how much in revenue would be raised at various tax levels, half percent, 1%. So people can see what it means and what the average cost of a typical household would be. That's easy. We could put together that kind of cheat sheet. It's gonna suggest, and this is if the board's desire, the person who used to be the head of CPA in Hanson, Massachusetts is now the chairwoman of the Board of Selectmen. So if at some point you'd like, I'm pretty sure she'd be willing to come in and tell you how they used it, what the benefits for that town was, to give you sort of a real-life experience of how it was used from a chairwoman of a select board in another town. So that's up to you guys. If you want, I'll arrange it.
One more question that I would have is I just wanted some clarification too, because I know we could set up an ag fund so that ag could potentially acquire properties through their own fund and do some fundraising there. Is this duplicating that? This is an entirely different program, but when we start giving different boards and commissions the ability to raise money for the same purpose, I just see a little bit of overlapping effort.
In my opinion, Mr. Chairman, I'll just give you my opinion. I think it's more worthwhile in this area than in the ag area.
Sure.
Particularly as it relates to community development. Particularly, you know, there's so many families that use parks and recreation area. And, you know, as I look around, there's some good properties, but there's also some properties that have significant need of improvement, both because we don't have the money, plus we don't have the manpower often to fix the park and recs at the level that they should be. And then historical society, this money can be used for historical buildings. I'm not sure if the woods is the only one. I think there might be another one or two other historical buildings in town. But it would be nice to be able to preserve those in a manner that lives up to the level of the town, so to speak.
Okay, so we'll set that for the agenda for two weeks. And we'll have a more detailed discussion. I will say that I've heard a lot from stakeholders in town that there is a desire for more recreation space, for open field space, for different activities, and there definitely is a need there. So I think the conversation is warranting of something that's a little bit more fleshed out. So Peter, is there anything else?
Well, that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we'll get it on the agenda for the next meeting. And Ron, if you could just prepare something for the rest of the board.
Yeah, I'll work with Peter and we'll put something together for you, some kind of presentation and stuff. Me and Peter will be able to put that together pretty easy, I think.
Okay. Any more questions for the board members? Alright, so moving on.
No other hands raised, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, no other hands raised?
Correct.
Okay, so then we'll move on to Town Administrator Update at a number seven.
Okay, so I got a couple of things I want to talk about tonight. First of all, let's talk about COVID. The current status is we have about 70 cases right now in town. The numbers, as you know, from Christmas have been rising pretty dramatically. In looking at the state numbers and the numbers today, you see starting to see the decrease come down from sort of what they call the Christmas holiday experience, and they see the numbers starting to drop down. And they're across most of all categories. The number of cases are coming down. A number of deaths are slowly coming down. Hospitalizations are slowly coming down. So I think we're moving in a positive direction. As more and more people get vaccinated, I think that's gonna help us even more. As you're aware, we finished the first round of vaccinations for the first responders, which was part of Phase 1. The second round should start right around the week of February 8th to finalize that process. You know, in the first round, as I understand it, and I've been working with Rich on this, you can do other first responders, then you can do people that are involved in senior concrete housing. Certain kind of health workers can go in Phase 1. And the next phase is gonna include a lot more people, people over 75 and people 65 and older, I think, or 55 and older with two kind of mental health or mental, excuse me, mental, with health issues, two health issues. And teachers will go on that list as well. We are still working with the other towns in the area, so right now, we're expecting to receive about 900 vaccinations, vaccines coming in. And our group is going to have to work with the area towns to identify those kind of health workers and people that might be able to get those shots, but we are prepared to move forward as that goes. Eventually, when we actually start seeing, we get into Phase 2, we're talking about using the library as a place to give shots to seniors. That's all been worked out. It's just a matter of having enough vaccines to distribute. So good things all around in terms of Rutland's, the quality of the work they did with the distribution has been phenomenal. It's been getting high ratings. We are, I think, well ahead of numerous other communities, and that's a real asset. Do we have that? So, you know, while it's a difficult situation, I gotta say, I'm proud of the work that was done in terms of our firemen, our health people, they've done a tremendous job in the police department to some degree as well. I'm very excited. As I told you, there were some grants that I wanted to apply for. They sent you an email that we were awarded two community compact grants, each for $40,000. One is for a payment management plan. Had a lot of discussion with Joe about before I even applied for this grant, did we have any kind of priority list of roads to fix? And Joe told me there was nothing in place. This is basically gonna be hiring a company that comes out, who does this all the time, and they'll develop a priority list of roads and essentially what it may cost to fix those roads. So eventually, when Joe has more Chapter 90 money, he'll have a list to work from. I think that's a tremendous benefit. That also will, once we have that, we can build that into the capital improvement plan that I've already built. I said that that was not finished. It's a work in progress and we could keep improving it. The roads will go into that capital plan, once we have some roads, once this plan is completed. The second part, I think, is extremely important. While we built a nice five-year capital plan, what we can outplan is the facilities. What the capital needs of those facilities are, be they repair or, I don't know, potentially replacement, whatever it is. The company will come in and evaluate each of the building. They'll take pictures, they'll show faults in the building. Look, they'll look at things like the useful life. Let's say there, for example, there was an elevator in the building. And the elevator had a 20-year life. It was on year five. They're gonna tell you that in year, 15 years from now, you're gonna have to start considering replacing it. Roof shingles, those kind of things, HVAC system, what is the useful life? And when does it need to be changed or fixed or whatever, and what the estimate of cost might be? Right now, it's sad because, you know, we have people like Carrie at the library trying to figure out how to fix her building, and that really isn't a great role for a librarian. I mean, they don't know anything about repairs to buildings. So this document will give them a lot of help and knowledge when they're trying to come to the boards and looking for funding for something and potential costs and stuff. So I think it's gonna be a big asset. Got a nice letter from the Lieutenant Governor today. I've had an opportunity over the years to work with both her and Sean Cronin and developed a good relationship. It was very nice saying that we're approved. And so it's $80,000 in new funds for the town. The RFQ, I've already pretty much developed for the Facilities Management Plan. Joe's tweaking that a little bit, but it's almost done. If you'd like a copy of the RFP, I'd be happy to provide it with you. Joe is also, we, I gave him the request for proposal for the Payment Management Plan from Southbridge. Had a friend of mine over there give it to me. So he's gonna make necessary changes to use that, either an RFQ or an RFP for the Payment Management Plan. The goal for both of those is to get them done, you know, through the rest of the winter, so to speak, and into spring, so that next summer we can start both of those projects and get them moving forward. So I'm happy that we're getting through those RFPs and RFQs very, very quickly. I guess, let me take questions on that, Mr. Chairman, before I talk about the next issue, or?
Sure. Does anybody have any questions about either the COVID-19 updates or the grants that the town was awarded? Nope, hearing none. I guess we move on.
Alright, so the next item I want to talk about is the budget process. I've done a lot of the budget work, and there's a number of items that we're still waiting on. We're obviously waiting on the school district budget, the Bay Path budget, and we're getting, probably gonna be another week or so, week and a half before we get all the healthcare numbers in from Maya. As you know, Mr. Chairman, I sent you a note, and the Chairman of the Finance Committee a note saying that the school superintendent is looking to schedule a meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee to review their proposed budget with you, and they're looking at the end of February for you guys to do that. So I've been talking to them in different bases, is letting them know where we are with the budget status. So they're looking for a date pretty shortly to put that together. They are meeting on February 8th. The superintendent's gonna propose this budget to the school committee. The school committee will look at it and see if they want to make any changes. So I'm expecting a budget from them sometime between, let's say, the 8th and the 12th or 13th. Once they have that budget, I can use that number and the other numbers I need to finalize a budget and get it off to both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, so we can start working on that. I expect it, I haven't locked it in with Ian yet. He knows it's coming, but I'm expecting we'll probably start doing budget reviews with Department Heads somehow, either the the third, somewhere around the third week of February, we'll start that process. I kept him informed. I've given him a list of groupings of departments so that he can look at those groupings and see if that fits the Finance Committee's needs in terms of how I grouped them. I tried to spread out the groups in such a way as it wouldn't burden the Finance Committee by having a bunch of, you know, one real long meeting. So to spread out over about six different nights, all the different departments and the school as well. The only other issue I wanted to talk about was a little surprised. CMRPC sent me an email today. As most of you are aware, or all of you are aware, we have green communities money. And this year, we're gonna be planning for a competitive grant for a variety of local projects, town-side projects to cut energy costs and improve, you know, energy use as part of the Green Communities Plan, and we have quite a few projects we'll be applying for. But she sent me a note saying, does the Board of Selectmen have any interest in using DLTA funding, which is Technical Assistance Funding from CMRPC, to include our school system in the community compact, or the community compact, in the Green Communities Program? So I said, you know, my concern to them was, well, we get green communities money and we don't want to give a bunch of money to the school, to the schools where it saves other towns money, you know what I mean? It may save energy costs for us, but it will save money for everybody else. I don't think that's kind of a proper way to use our green money to help the whole district. She said it could be, the money could be used for just the schools that are actually in Rutland. We could do that, and we'll have further discussion about that. But they want me to just send them a letter saying that we would be interested in allowing them to at least take a look at bringing the schools in to that program. I'm okay with it. I just want to take care of the town-side programs kind of first. And then, we don't have a lot of energy-saving type of things left in town, then we should try to work on doing it with the school system, saving that money because it benefits taxpayers over the long run. I'll just say that I think we should focus on the schools that are actually in Rutland should be our focus, and let other towns use their green communities money to focus on, you know, schools that are in their town. So if the board has no big disagreement, I'll probably send a letter to CMRPC saying we're at least willing to look at it.
Leah, go ahead.
Thanks. I have a question about the looping the schools into it. I don't necessarily care, at least seeing what that would look like. I think that's totally fine. But I know all of our schools have solar panels on the roofs already, and because I think Rutland's might be the only town of the five that does not have municipal electricity. We were one of the, we were the only town that could do that easily. And I'm not sure what the savings to the town ended up working out to be. So I would just, knowing that it's a complex regional school agreement, I'm not opposed to exploring it, but I would definitely want to know what, how that could potentially help us or our assessment or anything like that.
Oh, thank you. That is a very good question and one that I have. That's why I've scheduled a meeting for Wednesday at noon to talk with Kelly and Mimi from CMRPC to explain how this would work in terms of the schools. Also, I guess there's at least one other town. I don't know if it was Sterling or another town looking at the same thing. So I'm not sure yet. That was why I had a host of questions. I talked to Mimi, and she told me that I really needed to talk to Kelly. It's more in the energy field. So I'll know a lot better about it after Wednesday, but I think it's harmless to at least send a letter saying we're interested in looking at it. But I'm not convinced that we should do it yet. And that I'll bring back a recommendation when I get more information and understand it better.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions or concerns, move on to new business. We have Item 79, the U.S. Census Boundary and Annexation Survey. I know Aaron had sent us some information about that. Ron, did you want to give us kind of the rundown?
Well, you know, it's sort of interesting because the comment I got from the testers is this is kind of meaningless. It's really not very important to do. So my immediate reaction was it, you know, we can send them a basic information about the borders of the town. But then Lyndon kind of chipped in, I think it was either Jeff or Lyndon that chipped in and said that they had this whole study of it. So basically, I guess we would provide all the information that we have to the U.S. Census Bureau, and I think that's more than fine. They said, I'm not sure how important it is, but since we have the information, I see no harm in providing that information to them.
How, what we're providing them, it's my understanding that the perambulation that was done two years ago, or a year and a half ago now, was largely ceremonial in nature, and it was completed by the Scouts. Is that the level of information that we would want to provide to the Census Bureau in terms of its accuracy? I'm just not sure how accurate the actual boundary perambulation that we did as a ceremonial duty would be in terms of actual data.
I would say to you this, that I think that from what it was told by the Assessors Office, it wasn't all that critical. So you know, we could basically just send them the map we have, you know, the map that we have of the borders of the town, and that being enough. I don't know how much detail they want or really what the value of this is for them. So I would agree. I'm not sure that the Boy Scouts stuff is something they really need, but it really wouldn't hurt either, you know what I mean? So it's, it's they can, they can kind of pick and choose what information they want after we send it to them, you know?
Jeff?
Just two cents. So the perambulation project was actually on us, on the board. So I was the Select Board's designee, and then we utilized the Scouts as a learning project for that. So I was the, the select board's designate, and then we utilized the scouts as a learning project for that. Yeah, most of it in today's day is ceremonial, uh, back in the day, though, uh, we didn't have such technology. It was, you know, to keep the farmers honest from, you know, encroaching onto other ends, but uh, I think, I, I guess with the uh. The GIS system, the global, um, I think it's just an opportunity for everyone to uh. To pipe in saying, yeah, we, we agree that this, you know, speak now or forever hold it. Uh, and I don't think we've had any issues with the, the GIS or the mapping or anything like that to, uh, to warrant it in there, so. That's why I sent the, the perambulation report in there, I, I, it's kind of duplicative, and hopefully that would, that would suffice, but yeah, I wouldn't waste a whole lot of energy on it.
Good, anybody else from the board have any questions? Alright, next on the agenda, we have Joe here, the Mass DOT discussion about Route fifty-six, the tip project. Um, I know that Mr. Buckley had sent along a lot of information, there's a lot of information in that conversation. The intent of tonight's conversation is to not go through every bit of information, but if anyone had any questions, have a take a look at the information. Um, now would be the time to ask them, um, I guess, Mr. Buckley. If you could just give us a high level overview as to where we are with the project to date, um, and kind of what the timeline looks like moving forward.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. C, just um, a couple of quick things, uh, Ron, did you have a chance to send them my notes for tonight's meeting?
I didn't know, I don't, I don't even know if I had your notes, I have the whole plan and stuff, but I don't. I, I, I looked at, well, actually I did, I, I copied some of your notes, but I didn't send it to them, no. What from Mr. Morgan, you mean, the things that came from Mr. Morgan?
No, I, I sent some this afternoon before I went home, um, it's, it's alright, I can just speak to it quick. Uh, what I did, um, uh, was put together a rough timeline, I, I went through all the files we had at TPW, I, I talked to our. Our consultant CHA, and I, I tried to put together a timeline of roughly when the project started. And uh, where we're headed in the next couple of years, and in addition to that, I, I did some detailed information on the funding. So once um, town administrator sends along those notes, you got, um, you could read through them quick, um. They're already highlighted, they're pretty straightforward, but I'll go ahead and just take you through some of the highlights now, if that's alright.
Absolutely.
Um, the town started roughly the whole process in twenty fifteen, uh, they heard back from the Commonwealth in twenty sixteen. Um, at that time, they contracted CHA as the designer, and a public hearing was held in twenty seventeen. The original twenty, uh, twenty-five percent design for Route fifty-six was submitted to the Mass Department of Transportation on, in twenty seventeen. DCR's Office of Dam Safety, uh, in late twenty seventeen flagged the dam and, and culvert, um, and. Determined that it was unsafe and needed some additional repairs. And what the town tried to do was basically take the dam and spillway part of the work out of the job and manage it separately. Um, they applied for a, a, a grant, um, they applied for, up to a million dollars, and they received a grant for five hundred thousand dollars. The total dam work and spillway work was, was estimated between one point five and two million at that time. In two thousand eighteen, we entered back into conversations with Mass DOT. Because we realized, uh, even though we applied for the grant for a million, we received five hundred thousand, and we had all that work to get done. And it wasn't gonna work out, so we went back to the table with Mass Department of Transportation. And CR me, CR me, CMR PC, sorry about that, um, to look at additional funding options for the dam. And we were basically, um, able to get Mass DOT to agree that the culvert could be covered as part of the project. Um, but the dam work was non-qualifying, and at that point, myself and the previous town administrator, Mr. Nicholson made a decision. To go ahead in that manner, and we would pay for the dam work, and the Commonwealth and the federal government would pay for the culvert itself.
Joe, just to stop you just, um, for a second.
Sure.
The five hundred thousand dollars in grant money that we received to make the repair, did we utilize that, are we sitting on it, or did we have to give it back to the state?
We did, we used a little bit of it to make some interim repairs, but the reality is, the grant is structured in such a way that you have to spend it within the fiscal year it's given to you. Okay, so it's not like we gave, we, we just couldn't use it. Um, the, and you can't, you can't take that money and sit on it, you actually have to spend it the year it's awarded. I'm sure of that nature.
Was, was that prior, that was prior to your time, I think, uh, as well, that granting received, right, or had you started around that?
Um, I had just started around then, but. Um, I got there at the tail end of that grant money, and there, there was no way we could get that off the ground.
How much did we spend, can I ask?
I honestly don't know, I mean, it really, it, it, it was. It wouldn't even equate for a third of the cost of what you needed to do, you couldn't do a partial project, and even then, what you'd end up doing is holding up the road project overall.
So.
It, it, it was really just a poor fit for the, the job.
Did the nature then of the, because it, it sounds like then they're going to, to go over as part of the tip project, but we're making the dam repair. So did that bring that one and a half million dollar number down in terms of what our responsibility was concerning the project?
Yes, probably closer to four or five hundred thousand.
Which is a substantial savings.
Yes.
Okay, so, just to be clear, because this is a question that's been asked to me several times by constituents. You know, give me the most layman's answer you can, uh, so that basically. We went from being on the hook for one and a half million dollars for the dam repair to now being on the hook for maybe about a half million dollars. Or thereabouts.
Yep, four hundred thousand.
Okay, great, and that money has been already set aside and budgeted for this purpose?
Yes, it's been, it's been budgeted through chapter ninety and approved.
Okay, so that was my, my question, so if you wanna continue, I just wanted.
Yeah, absolutely, um. I just have to find my place, okay, so we talked about the dam and where we're at with the dam. Um, you know, the, if I could just, it's not in my notes, but I just wanna make, you know, a quick mention of the fact that it is an unsafe condition. It's in the town's best interest to address all of those, that being the dam, the culvert, the roadway. Alright, so. As we mentioned earlier, there's a public hearing scheduled uh for January twenty-sixth, twenty-one, that's tomorrow, and that, there's some confusion that's been uh batted around about that one. It's basically a virtual hearing, um, you folks have already received all the slides or the draft slide presentation to review. That's the presentation that will be presented online tomorrow, um, and folks can comment electronically. Seventy-five percent complete drawings are to be submitted to Mass Department of Transportation in April of twenty-one. A hundred percent uh are to be completed in September of twenty-one. Um, the town is, we'll get some help from Mass DOT, I heard there's a lot of questions about right of way and acquisitions. That's supposed to start in January of twenty-two. The project is uh scheduled to be advertised for construction and put out to bid by Mass Department of Transportation in July of twenty-two. And the current schedule calls for construction to begin in the fall of twenty-two, or October. Um, I would estimate a project of this size is easily gonna take a year and a half to two years. So start to finish maybe sometime in twenty-four.
When the, um, given that the acquisitions will be taking place roughly twelve months from now. When do we anticipate that the, the abutters that are subject to eminent domain are going to be notified that there's going to be land teacakes?
We begin, that's what I just implied, and if I, if I misspoke, I'm sorry, the town, uh, will get help from Mass DOT, they have, they have a group that does that work. And they start in January of twenty-twenty-two.
So that's when we'll start notifying that one most.
Acquisitions, yes.
Okay.
Now, the second part of my notes is, um, where we spent money and what we spent to date and where it's all going. Um, and I've tried to boil it down, um, the current engineer's estimate for the job entire is, of entire is six point four million dollars. To date, the town has spent approximately four hundred and fifty thousand, mostly on design and engineering costs. I'm sorry?
Uh, I think Ron just done.
Um, the town's, uh, still had, uh, had still to fund, uh, committed to chapter ninety, uh. In chapter ninety right now, committed, we have roughly six hundred thousand, uh, that was done in nineteen, and then we have roughly a hundred and fifteen thousand that was done before I got here. That hundred and fifteen thousand should, um, carry most of the design work through the seventy-five percent phase. Overall, we're estimating another two hundred thousand in design work, and possibly as much as a hundred thousand for. Acquisitions that you just mentioned previously, so with everything we've spent, we have roughly three hundred thousand to go. Uh, that's probably gonna come out of chapter ninety money, in addition to that, we're probably gonna. Replace a water main prior to that work being done, it's around a thousand feet of water main, I estimate that cost, we, that's gonna go on. Water and sewer enterprise, but probably about two hundred and fifty thousand.
So all in, the initial, you said up to date, we've spent four hundred and a quarter, something like that?
Four fifty.
Four fifty, um, and that's already been spent, that does not include the chapter ninety money that's been put aside for the dam repair?
So far, that four hundred and fifty, best I can figure, because most of that was done before I got here, is all chapter ninety funded, all chapter ninety financed over probably two or three years.
So is that then, I was trying to get a, a sense of the cumulative, so is the four fifty that we've already spent of the chapter ninety money? Is that part of that six hundred thousand that's allocated for the project, or is it in addition to?
No, uh, that's previous, this, it's easier to say it this way, we've already spent four hundred and fifty thousand, we, we earmarked. Six hundred thousand, and on top of that, we're probably gonna have to spend another three hundred thousand.
So the town is gonna be spending about one point four million all in for this project, most of which consists of chapter ninety money?
Yes, sir.
Which, Mr. Chairman, if I could, that, that is, and I've heard a number of comments from different selectmen about, you know. Road money and, and why things might not be patched or fixed up where we'd like to be. Uh, this project that was approved well before Joe came in is, is part of the reason, the, the big vast majority of our chapter ninety man, money. Is going towards this project, so it makes it difficult to do other things in town. Uh, but it is a project that was approved long ago, and there's millions of dollars estate money pouring into it, so. We've gotta complete it, and then that, once it's done, I should free up some chapter nine money, chapter ninety money again to use for, you know, doing other things. Is that accurate, Joe?
Yes. I, I'm just a little bit, when we, when we had applied for this, and again. This question, I know it's directed at you, Joe and Ron, I know this project predates you, there's been a lot of turnover, particularly Ron, there's been three town administrators. Since this project was conceptualized, and there's been several different culverts, so it's more just a. When we applied for this, this funding, did, did we apply knowing that we're gonna be spending a million and a half? Dollars in chapter ninety money for this one mile stretch of road? I was under the impression, speaking with prior board members that were on at the time, that we were just on the hook for engineering costs, so that was the original impression. We got under, undertaking with this project, is that?
I mean, I'll let Joe elaborate more than me, Mr. Chairman, but generally, when they do these tip programs. Uh, you know, they have a, an estimate of what the program is gonna cost, and they tell you. You know, how much is a percentage of the project that they're gonna pay for, and how much you have to pay for, and you're correct. Most of the money that the towns pay for are engineering funds, they get the actual plan developed, and most of the construction is taken by the state. As to what was said to our town in terms of the actual cost, I can't speak to that, maybe Joe can speak a little to that, but. Those estimates and those numbers probably came in well before Joe came in, Joe, can you give any more detail as to? When you first came in, did you get an indication or some estimate?
Well, I know this, I know this predates you, Joe, so maybe that's kind of an unfair question.
Some information, but. Joe, any indication at all as to what they told you when you came in was gonna be the town's overall share of the cost in dollars?
No, and, and in all frankness, um. What I could glean when we first got here, um, or when I first got in was, it looks like that four hundred and fifty thousand had already been spent. And the project was basically stalled because of that dam funding, I mean, we basically changed direction. So just to reiterate, the initial plan called to just do spillway work. And DCR's Office of Dam Safety said that that wasn't acceptable, the town pulled the dam work out. And then tried to get, you know, another funding source, and then we basically put it back in, uh, to keep it moving or to get it back on track. Uh, out of that million, I wanna say four hundred thousand is what's called, uh, you know. Non-qualified, or it doesn't come under the tip money, and that's all to go to the dam, I, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does, it's just, it's, it's a lot of money from chapter ninety to be spending.
Sure, just, just for clarity, just so that the, all the board members understand, tip money is federal money that comes into the state of Massachusetts. And you have to go through CMR PC, uh, to acquire some of those funds, and there's, usually there's years of waiting. To get on that project list before CMR PC, so, you know, it, it really is great that we got on that list, a lot of towns don't bother. It is mean millions of dollars and, and costs that are picked up by the federal and state government, but it, it, because there's no other source of. Of dealing with roads and dams, it really does a number on chapter ninety. I think in, in theory, it's a very positive thing for the town, but you're right, it's just horrible impact on, in terms of us allowing us to do other road work.
Well, the other thing you could do would be to just take it out of, out of levy, and that's not realistic either.
No. Alright, does anyone have any questions, um, or comments of, I think.
For the scope?
Before I, I, I give it to Leah, I just, um, again, I wanna thank Joe for coming in, I know that I've heard from constituents in town. Just because it seems like it's been a while since we've had an update on the project, so I certainly appreciate the information, and. As things move forward, if we can just have intermittent, maybe updates when the, the engineering, the seventy-five percent to a hundred percent go in. Um, and that way, we can kind of keep up with the questions as they come in, particularly if folks are gonna be attending tomorrow's hearing, they're probably gonna come back with. With some more questions and requests for information from, from the town side of things, so Leah, go ahead.
You also, I already sent you those notes, so if you're looking in your mailboxes, Joe's notes are in your mailbox.
Thank you, Leah.
Thank you, thank you, Joe, for coming in and piecing it all together for us, um. So if I understand correctly, the presentation will be online tomorrow, it's record, it's kind of an already put together PowerPoint. For folks that have questions based off of the PowerPoint, they can contact, um. Do they contact Mast dot, I don't see, uh, I see some email feedback contact information, is it better to contact Mast dot directly, or to contact you?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, but there was an email link, and the way that issues usually work is that there's an email link that. Was sent out beforehand when the announcement went out for the hearing, and they took questions up to a certain date, which they may or may not answer, depending on the nature of the question. The hearing is pre-recorded, so they're not gonna be answering any questions live time, and I'm not sure if they're gonna be taking questions. After the fact, which I think is, is where kind of we come in, it's the important that we have the information, so. If our constituents have questions, they can ask them to us, and then Joe can always reach back out to get, to get those answers, but.
Yeah, so I guess, I'm looking at the presentation that I assume will be online, and it, the, one of the last pages is Mast dot contact info, so I'm. Guess I'm wondering, does Mast dot direct contact, like direct, people to direct questions? Aaron and whoever directly to them on that information, that contact through that contact info? Or is it better for constituents or interested parties to contact Joe, Ron, the office, kind, you know, us. Directly so that we can filter stuff, I'm not sure, the way the presentation is, it looks like they're sending them to Mast dot directly.
Well, a couple of quick things, it's pre-recorded, but there are real people who, who do the presentation, so I'm sure that, that they'll discuss questions at the end. Um, and they'll, they'll give you some contact information, and of course, we're always willing to take questions.
I just hate, I guess I just hate for stuff to get sent to Mast dot because that's presentation, and then not hear any answers, and people get frustrated that we. Aren't providing information that they're looking for, but we don't know that, what information they're looking for, because they went directly to Mast dot, if that makes sense.
It does. And Mast dot, even though they say tomorrow they may, will take questions, or you can contact them, you know, electronically, they still may not write back. But again, we're, we're always willing to take questions.
Thank you.
That's a great point, Leah, um, alright, does anybody else have anything for Joe? Um, again, thank you again, Joe, I really appreciate, you know, you sent us, I think, uh, an overabundance of information, so. There's really no excuse for any of us not to be able to, to sift through it and, and get a better. there's really no excuse for any of us not to be able to, to sift through it and, and get a better sense of the project, I know that, I don't think anybody on here was on the board in that, move forward, maybe skip. Um but it's, it's kind of a new experience for all of us, so, uh I know Ron too, uh you came in and inherited this project, as did Mike, and so it's, it's good to just get everybody on the same page, so thank you all for, for that, I appreciate it.
I believe Mr. Clark was chair when that went, went through.
Well, Skip's fault, you know, I'll just blame Skip.
No.
I'll think the blame, why not?
All right.
Skip, if it means anything, when that went through, it was three and a half million, now it's six and a half million.
Well, I, hey, I got all the money in the world, hey, let's be real.
Well, you know, it's interesting too, Joe, that's, that's a good point, uh the price of asphalt has gone through the roof. Um so I'd be interested to see what that number finally lands at when they start the actual construction process, and my guess is that that's gonna jump up for the, the federal contribution quite a bit. We'll see.
All right, well, thank you, everyone. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to give me a shout.
Thanks, Joe, appreciate it. All right, uh moving on, um we have a, an item that requires, I think, a couple of different actions. We have a resignation from Mason Rainford from the Historical Commission, uh who I believe was acting as the clerk. And as such, the commission, I believe, uh had met to select Jeff as their new clerk pending board approval, and obviously pending the board accepting Mason's letter of resignation. So I think at this point, I'll entertain a motion uh to, I don't think we have, we do, okay, uh to entertain a motion to accept, obviously with regrets, resignation from um Mason Rainford from the Historic Commission.
So moved.
Whitman seconds.
Have a motion in a second. Just wanna say before we vote on it, um I remember when he was appointed, uh very uh very qualified individual, and certainly somebody with a bright future, and I know that his reasons for resigning were to focus on academics, and I know that he was excited. I think when he uh had, was, was appointed, he was on his way to college, so um certainly encourage him to get involved in the future if he wishes to do so. Uh Jeff, you had your hand up.
I was just gonna echo what you said, Mitch, uh very, very bright, energetic young man. Uh did a great job, he, he, he had his hand in a lot of things with the uh commission, and uh was accepted to college, university in Ohio, and he had been sticking out as long as he can, and he's just being honest, finally that it requires his full attention. And we totally understand, and we appreciate the time and the energy that he, that he put in, so he is a loss, and uh but it's, it's nice that he admitted that he, he, he has to give his priority to his education, which he should, so we wish him the best. Good kid.
Absolutely.
Yep.
All right, the motion in a second, uh so there's no further discussion, we'll have a roll call vote for the acceptance of the resignation. Um Stillings?
Probably recuse.
Nichols?
Nichols' eye with regrets.
Whitman?
Whitman, I with regrets.
Clark?
Clark, I.
And Recidi, I, uh motion carries, Corrie's, one recusal. Um as such, uh we have a letter from Peter regarding uh Jeff and his nomination and election to clerk. Uh we have a proposed motion to accept that appointment. I don't see that motion. We have a, Skip, that was a, a motion, we have a second.
Whitman, seconds for discussion, I have a question. And this is more a procedural question, I guess, we don't normally approve the, the, um
Yeah.
of other boards and commissions that we appoint, the um officers, so I was just curious why we're doing it for this one. Is it num, based on numbers for the Historical Commission or something?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Go ahead.
I asked the kind of the same question you were, because I had never seen it either. And Aaron, my new uh clerical person, says that this is the way they do it in other small towns, and I didn't know if it should be done here or not, so we just threw it on. But I, I would agree, I'm not sure it's necessary, but he says many small towns do that, do do that, but but uh, I've never seen, I've never seen it in the towns.
To be honest, like, I, I'm not sure that, now that we're having a discussion after a second, that I wanna get into this precedent, because we haven't, to Leah's point, done this before, I just didn't know if the Historical Commission was structured differently, if it's not, then I say we let that board vote in its own clerk, and we, we don't have to weigh in on that decision. Uh Jeff, and then Leah.
But just briefly, uh it, it is structured the same way, and, you know, I, I, I don't care either way, but it does set precedence. Uh and the clerk is probably insignificant, because you're just taking the minutes of the meeting, and for the record, nobody else wanted it, uh but uh but more so with giving the boards the opportunity to uh select their own chair is probably a precedent we wanna take a look at, so, uh either way, I'm fine.
Yeah.
Yes, I was, maybe a little bit of feedback from Jeff, um but I think that the appointments of board and commissions um has obviously gotten a little bit more politicized in some years than other years, and so in a way to try to take off some of that political pressure, I kind of like the idea of having the boards and commissions be able to self-organize, um and not have the thumbprint of us as a select board kind of micromanaging those boards and commissions anymore than we do by appointing their members. So that's kind of my thought, but I'm interested to hear feedback or discussion or whatever.
Well, yeah, that's, that's how we've kind of run things, um and we usually give the, the boards a pretty good, pretty good leverage to self-organize and uh.
Through, through the chair?
Go ahead, Skip.
I will, we, I will take back my nomination and let, let it pass the way it should be, making their own decisions.
So I have one uh rescinding of the motion, do I have a rescinding of the second, Leah?
I'll rescind my second, yeah, I think that we should stick with the precedent that we have been letting the boards and commissions self-organize.
Agreed. Lynn, and I saw you unmuted, did you have a comment?
I know, I was just gonna agree that I, that uh I think the board should make their own decisions as well.
Okay, uh Jeff, go ahead.
Continuing the discussion, uh one thing that would be requested of the board is uh permission to post for that to fill that last vacancy, because there may be some interest. Uh it's nice to see some reinvigoration of the Historical Commission, which had been stagnant for
Absolutely.
a year or so.
Right.
To Mr. Chairman, I'm just not sure, who, who, is it the Board of Selectmen that uh appoints people to the Historical Commission, is that, is that, is that the president?
Yes, and I think Anita, once she has the vacancy, and you and Damian would post the vacancy to the website where we have the vacancies.
All right, then, then we'll uh, we'll have that taken care of, and, and um when we have candidates, we'll give them to you guys for your selection.
Um, next item on our new business is the discussion for dispatch. Uh the town of Ware has expressed interest in joining the central dispatch group. And I think, Ron, this could be some good news, because it saves the town a substantial amount of money. So, go ahead.
You're, you're absolutely correct, Mr. Chairman, so this just came to me a few days ago, and I told Mike, Mike, start developing a presentation for the Board of Selectmen. I apologize for the timing of this, it, um they came before Mike and told him that they were interested, they were looking at two different communities or two different dispatch centers to join, and we were told that the preference is to sign up with us, but they needed, Ware needed to make a decision rapidly, uh so, you know, Mike immediately got on it and started drafting a presentation. Uh I just sent it to you literally, you know, forty-five minutes before the meeting, and uh I gave it to Peter, so it can be on the board. Mike is here to present the facts, and you're correct. Uh you know, one of my big questions to Michael was, is this gonna increase our labor cost? Do we have to hire anybody else? He assured me that he believes that his current staff can pick up uh the cases that he gets from Ware, and that they can handle it without adding any additional staff. What this means, though, is because, you know, they're gonna be getting their contribution on a population basis, the, the sharing of the cost, that this will save all the towns in the dispatch group uh significant amounts of money, and Mike can talk to you, he's, he's got his presentation to tell you exactly how that breaks down. Now, this is one of the good things about, once again, our town being in charge of dispatches, that we can make decisions quickly. You don't necessarily have to get approval of everybody else, but we do want to give the information to them, so they understand the benefit of this for the whole group. But I also want them to be comfortable that, that our dispatch center can handle these new calls without reducing the quality of the service we provide to everybody else, so Michael, after doing this meeting and going forward, we'll be discussing that with all the towns and, and explaining to them what we're doing and why we're doing it, so at least they have knowledge of, of the decisions that we're making. With that, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay to turn it over to Michael for the presentation?
Sure, go ahead, Mike.
All right, good evening, everyone, uh appreciate your time tonight. Uh so pretty much just uh go right from there, um Peter, if you can just advance to the next slide, I'm just going over a little background. Uh Ware is part of Hampshire County, uh with a estimated population of ninety-nine hundred. Um and a total square miles of uh forty total square miles of land. Um just in twenty-twenty, the police call volume was about nineteen thousand, and for fire, there was about twenty-three hundred calls for service uh in their community. Um they, like Ron said, they're looking for um a decision, a quick turnaround, they have a uh select board meeting in February, I believe, I think the first week of February. Um so that's why I'm here tonight, just to see if you guys are interested in allowing them to come and provide them with an estimated cost uh to join the rec. Um just a couple of important dates, um the, I just gotta move something around here, you can't see my screen. Um so they, yeah, their decision is by February first. Um the transition date that they're looking at into coming into the rec, uh whoever they decide between the two is uh December thirtieth of twenty-twenty-one. And the other important date that we need to um worry about is the State Ninety-One Development Grant, uh which is March fourth of this year. Uh that's where uh most of the funding would come uh to, for all the transition costs for Ware to come over, uh whether it be the CAD um records management sys, system, or a link for communications uh through their radio uh system. And uh a bunch of other little projects as well that would needed to be done to um have them transition into the rec. Um Peter, if you can just advance to the next one, please. Um like I said, some of those contingencies that the state would have to fund uh for us to take the town of Ware into the rec is uh radio subscriber replacement, which is all their mobile radios and uh cruiser radios. On top of that, we would need an additional two radio consoles to add to the rec. Um that provides my dispatchers more seats to sit down, more people to put on duty in the case of high call volume. Uh radio box alarm monitoring, uh they have a box alarm system out in their community, uh that, that would be new to us. Uh so we'd have to look at some kind of conversion for that to, for us to receive all their box alarms. Um additional Apco and telecom licenses, that's our emergency medical dispatch program uh that would be needed uh due to uh possible influx of staff work and dependent on call volumes. Um like I stated before, IMC, which is the CAD records management system, uh Citrix is uh the way the communities would log into the records management system, because that server would be in our facility, uh and they would have to remote in. Citrix is uh FIPS compliant, federally compliant, uh so that's what we'd be looking for to provide uh secure information uh over the network. Video phones for the uh Police and Fire Department there, so that anybody uh walking into those stations when there's nobody there, uh they would have access to contact us. And then lastly, the radio connectivity, which is the um connection between us and Ware, and being able to dispatch their units uh out to incidents uh that come in. Um the graph that's being shown right now is the rec's call volume uh for twenty-twenty. The hours of zero, one, and two are quite high due to, that's when all the officers at night start their uh building checks, and that's why those uh numbers are so high for those three hours. Um the call, the real calls for service call volume uh for those three hours are uh very low. Um like I said, they're very high due to building checks uh throughout the five communities right now. Um and what's being shown right now is the rec's uh current FY twenty-two operating budget uh for this year. We are looking at a one point two million dollar overall budget uh with four hundred and ninety thousand thousand dollars coming in from the State Ninety-One Department and state funding. Um which is bringing the total overall number that needs to be assessed out to all five communities uh to seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and six dollars and forty cents. Um as you can see down below, you can see the town's um assessments for FY twenty-two, uh Rutland being uh two hundred and eighty-one thousand. Um so that's the assessments, so this is uh the budget for this year, uh we can move on, Peter. Um these are the increases that would have to um go into the actual operating budget and not the State Ninety-One Department. Um we pay for um the annual software uh maintenance agreements for all IMC records um systems throughout the five police departments and fire, fire departments. Um so that is the overall cost for both the war and fire and police. Uh we would have to add an additional ten, ten grand into my uh FirstNet AirCard account uh to supplement the, I think, s- eight to ten additional pieces of apparatus that we were gonna cover. Um thousand dollars for the I'm responding, that's uh falls under the fire department, that's their way to tell everybody within their department, as well as dispatch, that they're responding to a call and not clogging the airways. E-dispatch is another grand there, that's for um every time we send out the tones for a fire department call, it sends a little thirty-second audio clip to all the fire department or EMS responders' uh phones. And then additional um fifty thousand for wages uh for uh additional part-time hours to supplement any high call volume uh hours or days uh that we encounter.
So those, those numbers then, to, to go back, Mike?
Yep.
Those would be split amongst all of the towns, that total?
That's correct, yep.
So if I'm looking at it right, it's, it's about, was it eighty, eighty-two thousand dollars, and so it would, uh that would be split evenly, or not evenly, but proportionately across all of the towns?
Yes, sir.
And those wages represent not a new full-time staff person, but increased hours for existing staff?
Exactly, yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh Peter, you can just jump to the next slide, please. Uh and just to clear that up a little bit, so this is the FY twenty-two budget with uh the comparison of Ware. Uh so at the top, you can see that I added thirty-two thousand into the purchase services line, and then uh fifty thousand into the wages, uh bringing it to eighty-two thousand. Um that brings up the overall operating budget up to uh one million, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty cents. Um below that number there, down in the grant funding, you can see that our projected um grant funding would go up to six hundred and fifty-six thousand um with bringing on Ware, which uh brings the overall assessed amount down to six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty cents uh to be assessed out to the, uh at, at this point, it'd be six communities.
Do we know what Ware's share of that assessment would be like?
Yep, uh so down bottom, that bottom graph there, if you go to the far right column where it says FY twenty-two with Ware?
Yep.
Right at the very bottom there, the one ninety-one, seven, seven ninety-nine and five cents, that would be Ware's cost.
So it looks like it would be saving the town of Rutland about seventy-two thousand dollars, if I can see the numbers. They're a little bit small, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, I know, same here, uh, hold on. I did print it out, hold on.
If so, that's a substantial savings considering the town's financial position.
Yeah.
So it looks like it would be almost a hundred thousand dollars savings, I'm looking at it, right?
Yep, you're correct.
Our current assessment was up around two fifty. And the new, the, the newest. The newest one, one seventy-eight, is that?
No, if you look at the fiscal year twenty, twenty-two.
Oh, sorry, yep, yep.
Rutland, it's two eighty-nine, two eighty-two almost. And then if we brought Ware on, it would drop down to one seventy-nine. I mean, and those are rounded up.
Yeah, that's all right, just it's hard for me to see that line item, but no, that's, that's a good correction, that's, that's gonna be about a hundred thousand dollars in savings.
Yep, exactly. And in looking at all the other communities, it does bring down their assessment substantially as well. So pretty much it brings down everybody's assessment, the lowest it's been in the last eleven to twelve years.
Okay.
And like, like Ron said, I'm not looking to put on any additional personnel. My personnel at this time could handle the expected call volume that would come in from the town of Ware. They do have a little bit of a different setup for dispatching. They do have, currently right now, they have a desk sergeant or desk officer that works their dispatch desk. They kinda, they want to continue to keep that position. So after a few discussions with the police chief over there, pretty much he wants to give us all their nine-one calls. We'll take the nine-one call, we'll dispatch it out. Once it's dispatched out, that desk sergeant or officer would take over that call from there. Which would ultimately bring the call volume down substantially for us, that would be that's most of the call volume and if, if we had to take the call and dispatch it out and continue to keep that call, then I would probably be looking at hiring an additional dispatcher to handle those call volume, but at this time, it's not needed if, if that's the way he wants to keep it.
Is there a chance like that that changes, because that sounds like on Ware's end, not on your end, but that that could be an inefficiency where a year from now, they decide, hey, this isn't working out. What do you think the likelihood of something like that occurring is in your experience?
Well, he really, he really needs that position and really needs to keep that position for IOD, IOD light work. How do I want to put this correctly? The older officers that are on the department, he really wants to keep that position for those instances that could arise on his end. He was definitely a hundred percent sure that he did not want to get rid of that, he needs that position there. He's, his main thing is he wants nine-one system out of his station. That's, that's the problems he has right now, is that continuing to keep his officers EMD certified, takes a lot of time and money for that. So he's really looking just to get rid of that. The fire department on the other side, they want us to do from start to finish on all their calls. Which twenty-three hundred is not that substantial for us, and I believe my staff could handle that with his.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Ron.
Mike, just, just a question for you, because I looked at your timeline.
Yep.
Transition, you talked about December of two thousand and twenty-one to be fully transitioned. In, in terms of the revenue for the fiscal year, as you know, the fiscal year starts July one.
Yeah.
Twenty-one, so are you telling me, what, what would be the revenue in the, in the, what's coming up to be the two thousand and twenty-two budget, I guess? What, where do you see the revenue come in? When, when, when would it fully be implemented? Is it December of two thousand and twenty-one? When would the money start coming in? How would that work? I'm, I'm a little confused by your timeline.
Yeah, so, so the timeline for Ware to come in is December, December thirtieth, they're looking at the very end of December. Obviously, these numbers that are put forward here right now are the full year, that's if they were coming in on July, so I'd have to adjust those a little bit. Pro-rate those back a little bit, which I can definitely do. This was just quickest I could put something together for tonight's meeting. So the six fifty-six would go into effect as soon as they would sign on. And obviously, that number may be prorated a little bit as well to match the deadline.
So just to be clear, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, is in your thinking, if they were to fully implement in December of two thousand and twenty-one, the revenue would be six months of revenue from December through, you know, June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two? So if you had a whole hundred grand in this year's budget, we'd see half of that potentially in the next year's budget.
Right, yes, that's correct, and then going forward, you'd see that change as well.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we understood, we want to see that full benefit in this upcoming budget year.
Right, if I could, if I can make it work by July, I, I would, but I, I think we'd be pushing it too close.
Mike, that means that me and you need to sit down and recalculate the costs for next year's budget as to what we're gonna be putting in.
Yep.
Reflect some of that savings for the two thousand and twenty-two budget.
Sure. So that's, that's pretty much the presentation that I have for you, ladies and gentlemen, tonight. So ultimately, what Ware is looking for tonight is just allowing us to give them a estimated cost of what it would be to come in and to see if you guys would be interested in to allow them to join the rec.
Okay, thank you, Mike, for the presentation. I think we have a couple of comments, Lyndon, go ahead.
Yeah, just for clarification, unless I'm mistaken, I thought that Ware provided services to the town of Hardwick for EMS?
They do.
And, and is that provided in the, the statistics you provided, or how does that stand?
Yeah, that's their total call volume, yep.
So that, that includes the town of Hardwick?
Yep.
Doesn't Hardwick also do New Braintree?
For EMS, no, Barry does, Barry does EMS for New Braintree.
But the PDs merged?
The PDs, yep, the PDs are merged, but Barry EMS does the EMS for New Braintree, Ware does the EMS for Hardwick.
So how, how does that affect our agreement if it covers another town, isn't that somehow?
That's, that's a good question.
Because they have a contract, they're being paid by the town of Hardwick for those services. And then we're gonna provide those services, so I, I would need clarification on that.
Yep, and I'd have to look at that as well, I know they're paying for the EMS services for that, I don't know if they're if part of that cost, if any of that is towards the dispatch portion of that, or if it's just for the EMS funded. So I'll get some clarification.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Jeff, did you have a comment?
And two follow-up questions, if I could?
Go ahead.
The numbers look good, if, if the town of Ware is willing to pay more than the town of Rutland lack the infrastructure that we have, it sounds like a good, a better deal to us. Quick question, what would happen, what is going to happen or propose to happen to the current Ware dispatchers?
There is no Ware dispatchers, so currently right now, it's being, all the calls are being dispatched by the Ware police officers or desk sergeant. And then if it's any kind of fire call or
Here's what I found.
Oops, sorry, EMS call. It is pushed down to the fire department and they have a firefighter that sits the desk there and has to take the call, dispatch it out, and then as soon as enough people come, he can get off the desk and take off.
Behind the curve for having a higher population than us.
Yeah, so they have no technical dispatches at this point.
Two follow-up questions, Mitch. You, Mike, due respect, you've been saying that we kept representing preparation for the influx of staff, influx of staff, yet there's not going to be any additional hiring. Is this gonna trigger a change of working condition beef or grievance by the union?
I, I don't believe so. They, when the town of Warren came on, they, they tried to file that as well and it failed between the town and the union.
The town of Warren grieved, or Rutland dispatches?
No, the dispatches, yep.
And lastly, sir, are they gonna be added to the, the current four-town police frequency?
No, so they, yeah, for, for the time being, they're gonna stay on their own frequency like Warren is, and the idea is to merge both Warren and Ware frequencies together and group them just like we do for the communities we have up here, up north here for Rutland. Pretty much making two different districts, the north and south district for the radios.
Thank you.
Yep.
So anybody else have any questions for the board?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask you a question?
Mr. Curren, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Director Moriarty, a, a couple years ago now, there were discussions about having to move dispatch, and there were discussions about perhaps the annex, whatever. We're not, the current plan does not grow staff, so I imagine that would not be necessary, but if it comes to pass that we, that you need to add staff because of other changes, would that necessitate moving the RC?
Great question, Peter. We have these, for two additional portals, two more positions, if you want to call it. So that is enough space to take on Ware. Anything further, I think at that point, we would have to start looking into a possible new space for the rec.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so the board has proposed motion on the agenda, however, it sounds like there's a couple items that need to be cleared up prior to moving forward. And I also know that, Mike, according to your timeline, you know, we need to make a decision as a board pretty quick on this for the Ware Select Board to kind of move forward. Ron, given the nature of the question, that Hardwick is entangled with the service, how would you propose us moving this forward if the board were to so choose?
So there's, there's two ways to do this, and again, I'm gonna kind of invite Michael in this conversation. One, if the, you know, will, obviously, me and Mike will look at that issue and find out what the impact that would be on the town is and, and recalculate that if we have to into the, the revenue we'd be getting and stuff, if there's any change as a result of that. The board can have its choice, either they can have me do it, come to a reasonable agreement, as I think it's a minor adjustment that, you know, me and Mike would review it and in the negotiation or agreement with them, we would obviously have to put something in about that, you know? Or we can simply, you know, negotiate it, get some kind of agreement, then bring it back to the board. The only question with Michael there is the timing of that, I don't know why that would not be a problem. I, I, what, what's this timeframe issue? Why, why couldn't we negotiate an agreement, bring it back to the Board of Selectmen for a vote? And then finalize it, is that, would think that would be okay with them or not?
So I think Ware is looking to make their decision on who they're going with at their next meeting, so that's, that's what they're looking at. So they need their number to compare us to the other center that's being looked at. And they, they, they want to make that decision to move forward and give enough time for whatever rec they pick. The time to prepare their development budget that starts March.
When, when did Mike, did they approach you about this?
Literally like a week ago.
Did they approach the other rec center about it?
Yes, they have, so that's where they originally approached.
Do you know when, when they had approached that originally, the first?
Quite some time before me.
So are we, are we being leveraged, or?
No.
That as a secondary, what's your take on it?
No, so talking with the police chief, the other rec is not amendable to allowing the desk sergeants to take calls, so that's, that's where he's at right now. So that's why he was reaching out to other recs to see who would be amendable to do on that.
So Mike, they, they, you're saying that you believe for them to make the decision, they're gonna want to see an actual contract, that's what you're saying, right?
Not an actual content, contract, they need a, pretty much a proposal or I don't know what you want to call it, a quote saying, this is what the price is gonna be if you want to join the rec.
So I guess my, my, I guess what I'm thinking then is, you know, we developed the contract, we write it up, me and you, we develop it, we address the issues that the Board of Selectmen have. We can say that this is a tentative agreement with you guys, that, yeah, we want it on this path, but we do have to have the Board of Selectmen vote to finalize the contract, that would be, I think, the best there is to go.
Yep.
Is that acceptable, Mr. Chairman?
If, if the board thinks it's acceptable, and I think that sounds totally reasonable, Lyndon, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess my concerns are, is that, you know, Mike, you said those numbers did include the Hardwick numbers, right?
Right.
So we're basing it based on those numbers. And I, I, I just, we really would need to have clarification, because we're gonna base it on numbers, including Hardwick. Then we need to have those numbers, if it doesn't include Hardwick, then we need to have the adjusted numbers. And if Hardwick's involved, obviously, we need to address that, so there's a lot of concerns. I, I certainly support bringing on another town, but I, I really would need clarification on those numbers and that town's gonna work into, into the, the mix.
So that, that's exactly what I'm proposing, what we'll do is me and Mike will work up, we'll get all the details, we'll draft up a proposed draft contract. We'll give that to that board, their board to look at, but we're not gonna finalize the agreement, we're gonna tell them it won't be filed until the Board of Selectmen votes to approve the final, the final contract. So you will have last say before we move forward in the final contract.
So essentially, you're just entering into preliminary negotiation at this point, I'm not even sure if we need a motion to address that, because we're not really approving anything or addressing anything. You guys are just having a conversation based on, on your research and your numbers, right?
Yeah, the only thing I would think is they're gonna want some indication that the Board of Selectmen is approving of this concept and that you guys are clearly on board, I think. I think they're gonna want to hear that, if they're gonna go forward, they don't want to do this unless they feel that the Rutland Board of Selectmen is a real player and really wants to do this, and so I think you need a little bit more than you know, some kind of vote to say, yes, you're interested going forward, you know, based upon a final contract approved by the Board of Selectmen, you know, something, something that gives them clarity that, yes, we want to move forward in this direction.
Lyndon, go ahead.
So, so can we just make a motion to enter into preliminary discussions? With the town of Ware, without being any more specific than that?
Michael?
I mean, it shows that we have interest in it, but you know, obviously, they, they didn't at, the, the Ware thing that, I mean, the Hardwick thing that wasn't part of the proposal, you know, concerns me, so I think it's fair to say that we could say that we're interested in entering into negotiations, but we, you know, with clarifications.
Right.
Exactly how we're saying.
Yes, and I think sort of what Ron is saying is, pretty much all I'm looking to do is say, yes, where you, we're we're amendable to allowing you join, this is the cost, but we need to go over these items and then it has to be approved by my board before we move it forward on that point. Draft an IMA or MOU, whatever we want to do from that point.
The, the motion, I think, Lyndon, would look something like move to have the town manager negotiate a contract with the town of Ware to be brought to the Board of Selectmen for final approval.
So I, I, I guess I would make the motion to enter into a contract with the town of Ware upon approval of the board.
All right, we have a motion and a second and further discussion. Seeing none, we'll have a roll call, both Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye, thanks, Mike.
Clark?
Aye.
And Recity, I have motion carries, nameless. Mike, thanks for all your hard work putting that together, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate your time tonight.
Mike, schedule time with me to, we need to finalize this and get the information from them, and then schedule a meeting with me so that we can work on it, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Okay, next item on the agenda, number eighty-three, Ralph Anderson Square Ceremony Date Confirmation for Board of Selectmen Approval. Jeff, I know that you and Ron communicated back and forth with some tentative dates. And I think it was proposed that we move this to the spring because of weather concerns and gives us plenty of time to coordinate with our elected officials at the state level as well as, I know Ralph has some family that would probably want to attend. But if you wanted to go ahead, just brief the board on kind of what, what you think that would look like, and we can take, take action on it.
Thank you, I appreciate, appreciate placing this on me agenda. So we had kind of a consensus that to push it back towards the spring, like you said, Mitch, the, the weather would be more pleasant in there, less likely to have a snow delay.
But also with the, the state of the COVID and, you know, the lifting of the twenty-five persons for an outside. Type of, uh, arena in there was more likely to be lifted in there because there had been significant interest in having. You know, the public attend for an unveil type of situation. So, uh, just throughout the possibility, the first Saturday. A Saturday would be, uh, probably more ple- uh, pleasant. Uh, for people to be able to attend in the afternoon. So the first Saturday is April third. Uh, I did speak to Ralph's children and they are interested in catering an event. And perhaps renting a tent up there to have some sort of a, uh, food, food type of venue in there. And then we would be responsible for the actual ceremony, the unveil. Uh, Mr. Buckley did get the sign in from the sign company. It looks great. Uh, it's ready to go. Probably have to do some, some cleaning of the island and straightening of the pole, et cetera. And, uh, if the board is amenable to the first Saturday in April, that would be great with the snow date of the next Saturday, which would be April tenth. In there, we can proceed with invitation, invitations and, and whatnot. And, uh, start working on some sort of a service for the event. April third is what we, we propose.
So if that's amenable to the board, uh, we could have a motion, um, to accept that as the date.
Motion.
Okay, but also, uh, we want, okay, we'll just take the motion first then. We have a motion, we have a second.
Okay.
All right, for further discussion, um, Ron, we usually for things like this, um, I know Ralph, uh, obviously Anderson family. Um, has been a pretty prominent family in town for a long time for myriad reasons. Uh, so we want to make sure that we, we reach out to Senator Gobi and Representative Ferguson. I think it's probably something that they would want to attend, uh, coordinate with their offices, um, as appropriate. Um, and that's, uh, Lyndon, go ahead.
And, and, and to include Congressman McGovern, because I believe that Ralph has a relationship.
Yep. So maybe, uh, Ron, you can, uh, work with either the family or Jeff to, to get those, those contacts. Um, for who should be on that list, but Ron, I see you have your hand up as well.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm happy to work with Jeff to put together, you know, like an invitation list and we can email it out to everybody. That, that's not a big deal. I do want to say to Jeff, though, that I would be very cautious about the food issue right now. You have to, the permit with D P H and with COVID going on, I think it's highly unlikely that that would be a good idea by April. And, uh, well, like, would generally, I would say that's a good thing. I'm just not sure that that's gonna work really well right now. I could even have an office party and have food for office members, so I'm not sure that that, that would really work. So I think I would discourage that at this time.
Okay, that's a good heads up. I mean, we're just in the talk stage, so appreciate that.
Just as a note, I'm sure you could probably use a food truck if they really wanted to have some kind of.
I was just gonna say food trucks.
Yeah, I mean, that's up to, to the family, but it's, you know, if it's something.
I think we, we also need to be cognizant of the fact that if this is a town event, we, we want to limit liability. Um, as well and do things that we're supposed to be doing. I'm not sure what the landscape is almost like three months from now. I don't think anybody is, so. Um, as we get closer, we might have to modify some of this stuff, um, to make sure that it's appropriate.
I think it's pretty clear that the general population are not gonna be vaccine, you know, not gonna be vaccine by then, so. I, I, you know, the, the, I think the seniors will be and teachers and a number of important, you know, key groups, but. I doubt very much the general population will have vaccines at that time.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call. Vote Stillings.
Stillings, aye.
Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
Whitman.
Whitman, aye. Thanks, Jeff.
Bark.
Aye.
And Recidi, I, motion carries unanimous, and we'll just, Ron, if you can, um. As we get closer, we'll have to revisit it and make sure that we're doing everything we're supposed to be doing.
That's fine, and Jeff knows the family, so they can coordinate that with Jeff and we'll get it done.
Yes, thank you.
Sounds good. Okay, next on the agenda. We have a discussion, uh, for economic development slash tourism. Um, this is an item that I requested on the agenda. Um, I know that Ron had sent out a template. Uh, just for some background, um, there have been constituents that have been reaching out to me. Uh, about not just vacant parcels, um, for commercial development in town, but also, um, some lots that are commercially zoned. Has some businesses reach out to me, uh, looking to potentially locate. It seems to be best practice in a lot of the surrounding communities to have a, a board. Well, the best practice would be a position dedicated to it, um, given we don't have, I think, the financial resources at this time to do something like that. Um, this is best handled through a commission. Uh, I know Ron and Dave, uh, have been really good about handling some of these issues, um, that we've encountered in town. But this is just something as we move forward, uh, something we want to think about, maybe, uh, following in line with best practice for other surrounding communities. I know, for example, Holden has an economic development commission, uh, next door as well as others, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, so, so a couple of conversations here. First of all, the chair is exactly right that there's, uh, you know, entirely economic development commissions throughout the state who handle its process. Uh, I was concerned when we started talking about this and trying to understand the industrial commission's role in economic development. Because, you know, since I've been here, the key issue's been the Heitz property, but not a lot of other economic development issues. I did invite Mike to the meeting. I, I actually, I'd send an email after our conversation about this to Mike and he got back to me this afternoon. So I invited him to join. He believes, and he read this, the state statute that created them, he believes that. Uh, that board could handle check and general, uh, economic developments in the same way that the commission can. Uh, again, let him, he can read that statute. He's here to discuss that. Uh, I also, it said to the chairman that, you know, at least from my point of view. Uh, my early indication, I don't want to, you know, say anything in absolute, but, but I don't see Rutland as a long-term. Uh, industrial town in any way. I don't see the manufacturing. I don't see the industrial park type. And frankly, if there wasn't industrial park, it would have been on the Heitz property. So I don't see the, the industrial side of it. I think we're gonna be looking at, you know, smaller retail, commercial kind of properties. One of the things I said to the chair, and one of the things that every day, more and more, and again, I've only been here three months and you guys know the town much better than me. But I really see this as a, potentially a tourist town to some degree. Uh, you really have some rich history in farming, which is extremely popular on today's day and age that people want to go to farms. I think we got, you know, at least two breweries, uh, being looked at in town, one through Kevin. Another one from a, a town nearby, people want to come in and, and develop a brewery. I look at the state park, I look at the horseback riding, the just unbelievable venue of the, uh, horseback riding here. I look at the, the rail trail, uh, we have one small bed and breakfast. Um, but I see with the foliage in the Fourth of July, I really see potential to make this, to attract people to come into town on a tourist basis. Uh, one of the things that I frankly think make a lot of sense, in knowing that the Worcester market right now, uh, short on, on hotels. Um, and that a lot of people are going all the way down to Sturbridge for hotel space to be able to do business in Worcester. I could really see a bed and breakfast, a nice bed and breakfast in this town would be a real plus. So in terms of economic development, I think, you know, at least, I, I have a thought that we should look at the tourism side of economic development. And see if we can maybe partnership with the, with the Sturbridge or somebody, uh, to see if we can get smaller specialty stops and things. That will increase, uh, business in town, but at the same time, such a way it's friendly to the population. Uh, so whatever component, I think, uh, that component needs to be worked into whatever we do. Uh, in terms of the charge of the R D I C, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll leave that to Michael to, to make that case. Uh, he just told me what he thought today, uh, as he read me the statute, but. Yeah, you put them in charge of economic development at broader scale, an increase to charge them or create new commission. Uh, that's really for the board to decide which path it, it goes on. I did provide you, the town of Charlton. Is just reorganized and redid their economic development commission, so I, I, basically, the, the town administrator's a friend of mine, I asked him. And he gave me the wording I gave you, I just changed it with Rutland. Uh, but that's a kind of newly developed economic development commission and the basis for the, the creation they did. Uh, we can use that, change it, do whatever if we feel that we want to adopt the commission here, but at least it gives us a good template to work from. So that's my thoughts, uh, on that, Mr. Chairman, and I don't know if you want to let Mike have a few comments. I, I did ask him to join, so I think that might be helpful.
Mike, go ahead.
But I guess my first, um, question would be, uh, Mr. Chairman, you know, when, uh, when he explained that. Um, the R D I C is in fact that commission and could handle that, you were shaking your head no, so I'm curious what, why that?
Well, I think this, this modernizes that process. I mean, in reality, you know, chapter forty, section eight A, which governs industrial commissions. Um, is an antiquated force of M G L. I mean, we're not looking at industry, really, Mike. And I think when this was passed in nineteen sixty-five, uh, the textile mills were still open in Worcester. You had a vastly different economic climate. In terms of central Massachusetts than you do now. I think most municipal bodies are moving towards, again, if not a position itself. A, a more modern streamlined commission that helps connect potential, um, investors, businesses. To resources to make the processes easier. Um, and works directly with state economic development resources. So it's just, it's more how M G L structures an industrial commission and more how it was adopted in the town. And what R D I C's official written charge is, um, I don't think is conducive to what. The modern definition of economic development should or is being viewed as. For example, economic development is not mentioned anywhere in the M G L that governs the industrial commission. So it, it's just, it's a separate, a separate thing, whether that means, you know, when the Heitz property is discharged. Um, the R D I C transforms into the economic development commission, or whether that means. A new commission with the R D I C closing out its business once that Heitz property has been discharged. Um, that, I think that's a conversation that the town, uh, the community needs to have. Uh, but I think the way that things are set up right now, uh, we really, this is a gap in terms of our service provision. So that, that's really where the mindset was going into this and what other towns have done, um, successfully. Um, including surrounding towns. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, I guess, uh, the, the, I guess the question I'll ask you, though, is. Do we agree that currently the R D I C is in fact the Rutland Development and Industrial Commission? That is, which is what, what Ron, Ron called me and left me a message and said, hey. Um, and I'm gonna kind of paraphrase, I don't want to speak for you, Ron, but, um, I'm thinking of establishing a town-wide. Uh, economic development committee. I know you guys are just in charge of the hospital. Well, uh, that may have been too strong a word, but I think you guys are just in charge of the hospital. We'll look for something more town-wide. And that's when I pointed out to him that we are in fact the industrial committee. Um, not just in charge of the hospital. So do we agree on that?
Uh, I'm not sure what the specific charge is related to the jurisdiction of R D I C. I just, I'll just ask you, I mean, have you done anything outside of the Heitz property?
Yes.
What?
Well, the, the, um, cell tower down on Route sixty-eight. Which in the twenty years since we signed that contract has contributed over three hundred thousand dollars to the town's general fund. Was done solely by the R D I C and continues to generate. Uh, I'm kind of going from memory here, like twenty-two thousand dollars a year with a three percent escalator every year.
Okay, I, I'm just, I'm talking about, again, modern economic development. I mean, we're talking about business location, we're talking about streamlining. Public, private services here. Um, it's just, it's how it's structured that is not conducive to modern economic development. Jeff, I saw you had your hand up.
I was just gonna ask if, if anybody had the charge in front of them of the R D I C, if you could read it.
I can only read you, excuse me, uh, Mr. Chairman, I can read you what was voted on at the town meeting, if that's of any help.
Uh, no, is that, we just adopted M G L. I mean, that, and then you had a, were given, uh, what jurisdiction over the Heitz property? I, I would ask, I mean, Peter, I know that you're working currently right now on the, uh, the charter and the bylaws, if you're still with us. Um, I don't know offhand, you know, specifically what the written charge for R D I C is.
I'm not sure that there was ever a formal charge written for the R D I C. Uh, I'm, I'm basically in agreement, I believe, with, with Chair Sullivan in that the intent was. That the R D I C is Rutland's implementation of chapter forty, section eight A as the, as the, as the E D I C. Right. On your point of view, uh. But I, I, again, I have not, I haven't gone looking for a specific charge from this, from a select board. So it may exist and I just don't know.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd allow me, it's, uh, the article was voted on was two sentences. Okay, if I read it?
Sure, go ahead.
It's, uh, this was in March of sixty-five, voted, uh, that the town accepts section eight A, chapter forty. General laws providing for this, sorry, it's a little dark here, for the establishment of a development and industrial commission. For the promotion and development of the resources of the town and that the selectmen be authorized to appoint members.
Okay, great. I think we're talking about two totally different things, Mike, and that's, that's fine. Um, but again, I wanted to put on the agenda tonight to have a conversation to bring us in line with Massachusetts best practices. Um, this isn't an issue where I think nobody wants to be stepping on anybody's toes. I think we just want to get in line with what other communities are doing successfully, recognizing our strengths and weaknesses as a community. And making it easier for businesses that want to do business in Rutland to locate to Rutland.
Clearly, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would say that it's good to start that conversation. And, you know, however we're gonna move forward, it's something we will kind of, I think we all want to come to some consensus on. Um, there's a variety of ways we can move forward. This is actually. Another component, as you described in terms of modern economic development, there's, there's also towns that have what's called an economic development authority. Um, one of the things that economic development commissions don't have is the authority to use revenue. Uh, to, for instance, buy land for economic development purposes and stuff. Where how, uh, economic development authorities actually have that. Actually, I think the R D I C to some degree has that. But I think it, I think we need to explore the various concepts here and come out with what we want to do for the long-term future. So I, I agree with you that this is a good time to explore it when Peter's doing the bylaws and see how we want to move forward. And maybe it is, it, you know, my, Mike's members transition ought to be the economic development commission. Uh, or we can look and see what makeup is best in terms of, you know, how you want to frame that board. So, you know, as you know, sometimes you have a railtor in it, sometimes you have a, you know, manufacturer in it, you'd have a, um, you know, citizens, just normal citizens in it. So I don't know if, uh, as I remember, the R D I C has a pretty good distribution of people on it in terms of all different components of the business. But, uh, I do think we, I think this is a, a good discussion to have. And maybe it really shouldn't be at a selectmen's meeting, but, you know, a group of us get together to talk about it and, and see, you know, what we want to do for the future. And then eventually we can bring back a final decision to both the board of selectmen and to the bylaw committee. But, but I, I think a workshop among a variety of us would probably be a good idea on this issue.
See, anybody else have any questions for the board?
Well, I'll just make one other point. Uh, I, I believe in what Ron just said, and I think. I think, uh, uh, just a roundtable discussion on what the objective of whatever you're asking to be done here. You know, how you want it, how you want it changed or how the modern, um, commissions work. You know, just by way of example, um, never has any other board or any local business come to the R D I C. And said, hey, and I'll just, I'll just use an example. Now, I don't, I don't want to do that because I'm gonna put someone on the spot. But, you know, there have been businesses who have been, uh, started up in the last year in town. And none of those folks were referred to the R D I C for our assistance to work with them to do it. And we'd be more than happy to do it, but we don't find out about it until there's pu- public hearing on, you know, whatever the business happens to be. So I, I think communication is probably, you know, the foremost, uh, opportunity here for us to work together on.
Understood, Mike, and, and that goes both ways. Uh, Leah, go ahead.
Um, this is just a general kind of common observation that I know we've been talking about and nothing, no movement. Um, but we really, I think, as a board, a select board, need to revisit all of our boards and commissions' charges. And, um, because I feel like every conversation we have with a different board or commission comes back that, um, they don't have a charge. Or their charge is very antiquated, or we can't find the charge or anything. So, um, I'm not sure if we can get together a list of the boards and commissions that have charges and what those charges are. And then as a select board, we work to do that. And maybe it makes sense to incorporate R D I C into this. And I think we have the ability to expand the R D I C membership if that's the route that we end up going. Also, if we decide we want to diversify, um, the members or whatever. I, I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, but.
Yeah, no, I, we did that in the spring, Leah, with the, the boards and the charges. I'm not sure if, if you recall, but we'll have to revisit that anyway when we go to make reappointments. Um, then we had that list, I mean, we could have that list resent out.
I was gonna say, can we have it sent out? Because. I was gonna say, can we have it sent out? Because I apparently am not getting a lot of emails.
Oh, we had a conversation about it, I think, back in March. We, we do it every year. It's, it's just, we've gone through it. Uh, we can certainly put a different focus on it this year if that's what the board wants to do. Jeff, you had your hand up?
Yes, sir, real brief. Uh, I mean, we're having a discussion tonight about a. Because of a fifty-six-year-old. Antiquated. Charge. Perhaps the solution to this problem. Is to update or upgrade or modify. The charge as a, uh. Amendment to that particular bylaw that was voted on in nineteen sixty-five, and maybe that could be something that we could. Uh, table in for a possible warrant article in May. To, uh, update that so that, you know, everyone can proceed forward.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's kind of where. You know, one of the options for what I was heading with, with placing this on the agenda. And again. You know, Mike, it might just be an issue of updating. That, um. That charge and bringing that industrial commission. Into the modern era because, you know, section eight A is, it's, it's very antiquated. And we're just living in a different world, but. You know, the other. The, the purpose of this is not to create another board or commission. Uh, the purpose of it really is to create or consolidate resources in one area. Uh, to be more proactive about business development. In town, in line with what other communities. Are doing successfully and working with. There's a lot of different groups out there, not just the chambers. But also, um, there's state money, state funding, there's grant funding available, there's technical assistance available. For economic development activities, a lot of which we haven't tapped into effectively in the past. And it's something that we really need to start looking into because we're missing a lot of those opportunities. As Central Mass gets built out and developed out. We really need a more proactive approach, in my opinion, to tackle some of these things. It helps us with community planning. Um, so again, Mike. This was not an affront towards RDIC in any way, putting this on the agenda, and I hope you don't think that. It's more.
Absolutely.
No, while we're looking at our, our bylaws and our charter. How do we follow best practice with other communities in the region? What puts us in the best position moving forward? And, like you said, uh, when we adopted this in sixty-five, and Jeff just said the same thing. Uh, we're talking about, you know, sixty-plus-year-old. Uh, adoption, and we just might need to tailor that to be a little bit more modern.
Yeah, uh, first of all, let me be clear. I, I take no affront to the discussion. I just, I wanted to point out to the, the TA and you, uh, you individuals who may not have known. That our responsibility does not stop at the boundaries of Rutland Heights. Number one, and I guess, secondly, I'll ask. Um, I think I heard you say that you reviewed all of the, the, uh, charges of the committees. In the, within the past year. Did I, did I mishear that or?
No, we had done that, yeah.
So, I, I never saw. You know, a, a charge of the RDIC after you did that. Is there a way that you can supply that to us?
Yeah, I could resend the list that was sent out last year. Um, there were a couple of committees that. We noted did not have charges, which runs antithetical to, you know, our own bylaws in terms of running these committees that we didn't come to resolution on. Uh, so I will say that as well, and it's something we're gonna have to revisit and clean up.
Okay. Well, just, just to sum up my position, anything that we can do to promote. The development of the town to, to support the tax base. Uh, my, yeah, my committee, our committee is two hundred percent behind. Um, we continue to work aggressively with, um, upper-class homes. Um, we've got, you know, a couple of other things that we've talked about, but never seem to develop, uh, basically every, every opportunity that we discuss with people. Uh, it comes back to, uh, you can't get here from there. Um, so. Um, we continue to. To work at it and I will keep you abreast of it.
Thank you. All right, anything else from the board? All right, so we'll, we'll put that on. Uh, for our future agenda and maybe, uh, we'll be talking about Peter and we discuss the, uh. Start discussing everything that you're doing. We can kind of have that discussion then.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Night, Mike, thank you.
All right, uh. No, it's getting kind of late. Um, just want to put on here a reminder. Uh, to all of us, and that this is an issue we broached before. When members are posting. Or sending communications. Um, until issues come to the board. It is not on behalf of the town, and so I just want to be careful because we've had letters go out. On letterhead, we've had posts that have been. Uh, the town of Rutland. Until things get to. The board of selectmen, I think we need to be careful with that. So just as a general reminder. Anita had sent out a copy of the Board of Selectmen handbook, which is put together by the MMA. So I know all of us have a copy. I'll just encourage everyone. Uh, to please just familiarize yourself. With. Those specific duties in there. And the issues around communication. We just don't want to. Miscommunicate anything to the public. And then have there be confusion. Because it comes back to bite us. So just as a general reminder, not throwing anybody under the bus. Mike, did you have your hand up?
Just a quick one, Mr. Chairman. I, I think I also heard you say that. You've personally had, uh, a couple of businesses approach you with, you know, how do I get established in town? Did I hear that correctly?
You did.
Okay, well, I mean, if that's the case. Uh, someone should be sending them to us and, and, you know, I, I don't mean just you, but I mean. I've never had anybody come to me and, and so I, I guess what I'm saying to you is, I encourage any, anyone who comes. To any of you folks, uh, requesting. Um, support. That's what we're here for.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, let me throw myself under the bus. Uh, for the conversation you, you were actually moved to. We made a mistake, my office. When we got the notice of the state. Route fifty-six project. In terms of the state requires a requirement that we notify people. Um, citizens of Butters. As to the state project. I think we did put that on Board of Selectmen, uh, letterhead, and it caused some confusion with you guys, so. Um, in the future, though, does that? There's something like that, that's kind of just standard procedure. Does that require a Board of Selectmen vote or just a notification of the Board of Selectmen? That we might send out that kind of information?
I'll leave it to the board. Uh, my comment in general, because I don't want to throw anyone under the bus. We have a good working relationship and the boards work very well together. Was just two board members. Um, it's just, there have been some concerning. Incentives, uh, among our own board. It wasn't town staff related, so that. To Ron, I'll leave that to the board if they want to make a decision on that. In my opinion, that that was a minor. Communication and stuff like that's regular town business. I would be, be personally be fine with. Um, it's more for board members. Uh, than for, for you in your office.
And well, just, just from my office, you know, one of the things we will do, and. Me and Aaron had a big discussion about this. If we will make it a point before we say anything else on. Board of Selectmen letterhead, even standard stuff that will at least send you guys a copy. So that you're not surprised by citizens, if something went on on your letterhead. So. We'll make it at least clear that you guys have it, so. There's at least no surprise for you. Again, it's standard stuff, but I, I. I do appreciate and apologize the fact that. You know, I don't want you guys getting caught. You know, trying to answer questions and something is in your letterhead you don't even know about. So we'll. We'll make a point of doing better with that.
All right, any questions, comments? Here, uh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I agree with what Ron just said. If we can just get a heads up on. The procedural stuff that we have to do. Sometimes it needs, you know, we have a deadline that we have to meet posting-wise or whatever. I have no problem, just give us a heads up that it's going out, or, you know, CC us on the same emails or, or whatever, but that's all.
Yep. All right, uh, next we have, uh, item eighty-six, establish goals and objectives for the town administrator, FY twenty-twenty-one. Ron, you want to give us a brief?
So, yeah, you know, we had a discussion about this at the, at the last meeting, and I told you I would at least draft up something to. To begin this conversation. So there's, there's two pieces. One is it. You know, I tried to set up some goals and objectives, the basic kind of things that, that. I work on that are expected of me and, and important items, I think. That you guys need to have about what I'm doing. I. I also gave you, you know, I've only been here three months, and generally when you first come in. Uh, you generally just start to meet people and organize stuff, and I think that. Perhaps I was a little eager because I, I feel like we really did a lot in three months. It's been crazy, and I would say to you that. There's quite a list of things we did, but. I'm not sure you would get this kind of list every three months, just to let you know, but. I feel good about what we did. I, I gave you an outline, and I'm not asking for you guys to. Adopt the goals and objectives tonight, but this was at least a document. For you guys to begin discussions and, and see what you thought and. Whether they're willing to take any constructive ideas and changes to this document, and we'll update it for you guys, so. So, uh, just let me know.
All right, so we have in our packets tonight, um, a goals and objectives, uh. Draft that Ron had put together. Um, as well as an evaluation expectation. Uh, if you recall, when we brought Ron on, uh, part of this was. Firming up a more consistent evaluation plan. Uh, I know with Mike, uh, we missed all the milestones in terms of getting his review done. Uh, in a timely fashion, and I think it's something that we owe to our employees to be able to do it. And so, um. That being said, does anyone have any questions about? The, the TA's goals and objectives. Uh, form that he's provided. I know that we had something similar. That we had used before, and it almost, I think, is, um. Mirroring that form that we used for our prior TA. Uh, so I think it's, you know, pretty in line with, with best practice. What we can also do too, I know the board has met prior. As a one-off to form a, a board goals and objectives. And we do have a newer board. Couple of members that were just elected. It might be worth doing that. Uh, I also know that. Any individual goals and objectives we might have had this year have been thrown way off course. Uh, due to the nature of kind of what we're each trying to manage the town through. And that's to be expected. So I'll, I'll field any, any questions or comments from the board members, if they, they want to put some input in. Jeff, go ahead.
Let me unmute here. Um, I, I did like. The, uh, the rubric that you sent out there. It seemed very reasonable and the goals. Uh, appeared achievable in there. Uh, one of my personal. Uh, favorites and priorities would be the part about positive relationships. In there that is important to have. Uh, for the TAs, one of your primary charges, if you will, would be maintaining, trying to find it here. Positive relationship with, positive relationships, uh, with CMRPC. Regional Transit, MMA, State Centers, Representatives, and, uh. Other government organizations as well as citizens. I would just like to maybe, uh, suggest that we put in there, uh. The department heads. Also, I think that's a critical element of the, uh, TA position. Is to forge positive relationships with, uh, the di- different entities. That hit our town, police, fire, DPW. More like it. But then also, I liked it, it's, it appeared, uh. Decent. Good rubric.
So just for you, Mr. Chairman, um, not only is it, this is designed for you to score. But, you know, these, these, all these boxes are expandable. So if you guys want to put in comments about what you think about why you scored it and everything else. I, I frankly like that feedback. You know, you give me a score, says, okay, I'm above expectations. Why? What, what is he really like? So. This tool is designed for you to allow you to also make comments. Uh, and give guidance as well. So, you know, I hope that it's utilized in that way, you know?
Absolutely. Um. And then you also had provided us with. A list of your accomplishments. I guess, Ron, my question to you. Is because we do owe you. Uh, we said in the first quarter, I think that we would have a review process. How would you like that to unfold, and how would you like the board to handle it?
Well, I, I guess truthfully, when, when we had this discussion when you hired me. I wasn't looking for anything all that formal in that, that quarterly assessment, but just an open ability. To communicate back and forth of things you like, things you may not like. To give me a, to, to understand. But what I don't want is, you know, we get to the end of the year, you give me an evaluation. And all of a sudden, you know, you don't like things in your trash, and saying, give me low scores. Where I didn't even know that I was doing it wrong, you know what I mean? So to me, this is more of a tool. Just to communicate upon, hey, you know what? I really like the way you're doing this, but you know what? Maybe you should do this. And give us more information, or these are some of the things we'd like you to work on. So I don't think it needs to be formal. I just think it. It gives us an opportunity to discuss. If you like what's being done, if you don't, you know, what communication changes. I, I don't think this, this part of it has to be formal. I think the. Finalized goals and objectives at the end of the year needs to be more, you know, detailed and formal. But I, I kind of like, this is just a give and take is, is my attitude. Uh, but, you know, it's up to the board. Uh, you know, my contractual obligation clause for the one-year full assessment. That's what the contract clause for. To me, this is kind of a, a chance for us to. Really discuss, you know, things that are important and, and, you know, how you feel. I mean, last thing I want is. To be doing things you don't like, you know, and going in a bad direction. So. That, that's the concept here. Now, I'll say this, it. You know, a lot of these, I, you know, I put down a lot of meetings just to give you guys a feel for the kind of meetings I'm having. But a lot of these will disappear. A lot of these are introductory meetings, you know, that. Being new, I wanted to introduce myself to all these boards and commissioners, just to say hello, let them know that. I'm here for them if they have any questions or issues. So the meetings is just. There's been a lot of, of meetings, and I didn't, I mean, I obviously didn't give you everything I'm doing, but. I wanted you to have a feel that. I'm not sitting around with COVID, just standing in my office. I'm, I'm discussing a lot of things with a lot of people. In terms of the accomplishments activities. So some of the things right now. Are easier for me because I can steal stuff from things that I've done over the last number of years, and I can. I had a good format for the capital improvement plan. It was a massive amount of work, but at least I already had that format done. I'm gonna. Take some policies. I want to look at our sexual harassment policy. I just finished one not long ago in Southbridge, so I'm gonna get them to send me a copy. And adapt that, and if it's a better system than what we have, put it in. So there's some things that I can accomplish. Quicker. In those first couple of months, but as I use that stuff up. In later months, I'm not gonna have those things to be able to just dish up in the beginning, you know what I mean?
Well, Ron, you should have been smarter about, uh, spreading out your accomplishments here. To make it look better. I mean, you don't want to, uh, set expectations too high, you know?
Well, that's, you know, I gotta be honest with you. I, I, I don't care because. Frankly, my basic philosophy is I want to get stuff done. I'm not.
Just kidding around.
I know what you're saying, but I, I, I just want you to recognize that it is. It, it, you know, this first few months has been, frankly, I think we've, we've got a lot of things done very quickly. And, like I said, the, the. The RFQs. Took me, God, you know, three weeks to put together in Southbridge for an RFQ for the facilities management plan. The one I just did the other day took me a couple of hours because I had all the work done from Southbridge. I just converted it for Rutland, so. It saved me a ton of work to get some things done. And I'm gonna use, because I'm not one that likes to. Create all new things. I'm willing to borrow things from other people. So that we can get a good product, and I'm, I'm, you know. Uh, it's great that other managers in the area have been supportive of me, and I have to have good relationships. And I want to kind of fix things as quickly as possible and bring us up to date, as you. Often describe as a professional. Kind of office, so. We're moving fast and. I feel good about it, but. I, I guess I just wanted you guys to have a feel for what's going on the last three months and. The big issue to me is I try to communicate with you guys and give you, I think sometimes more information you probably want. But I, I hope you guys are happy. That you feel you're being informed of what's happening. So I think that, that's one of the more critical things I wanted to get to tonight.
So I think what, what we can do, because this, this meeting's getting kind of long, and I'll let the board comment or. Whatever they want to do, but I would suggest then. That we take this form that you provided as a template. We can each take a crack at filling out some details to give you feedback. And then put it as an item for focus on the next agenda where we can, we can take some time. And flesh out the, uh. Actually have that process. We can provide you that input and feedback. And looking at all the material you provided. And looking at the rubric and kind of filling that in. If that works for the board.
I think that's a good idea, Mitch.
Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add? Leah, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's another meeting. I benefit, have benefited a lot in the past of having the joint or the, um. Brainstorming session with the board as far as board setting kind of goals and objectives and priorities, and I think that it's important to do with. Um, with the town administrator also because our board goals and objectives will obviously. Impact the town administrator's goals and objectives. So. I know it's another meeting, and I feel like it needs to be not a Monday night meeting because we have so much. Regular business. Um, but if we can carve out a time to have a couple of hours of a meeting. Um, that it's kind of that, that brainstorming like we've done in the past. Um, where, you know, we've done a lot with the. Even during the pandemic, and I feel like bits and pieces are, are still floating about, and if we can cohesively pull that together. As well as look forward and see where, um. Our priorities as a board are, I think that would be really good for us as a board as well as the administrator.
I think that's also, it, it's a great point, Leah, and, and I, I say, I'll just speak for myself, um. But I, I think that this board. Uh, in particular, I think that, uh, you know, obviously we, we had a, uh. Interesting election. Um, for our municipal election. And, but the board has really come together and, and worked quite well, and, uh, uh, from a personal perspective, but also. To your point, Leah, we, there has been a. to your point, Leah, we, there has been a lot that the town has moved forward on that sometimes has gotten lost in the shuffle because we're also crisis managing, right? Um, there's been a lot of new grants, there's been a lot of new initiatives, um, the master plan project has started. You yourself have been very involved with the uptown, the, the study group, um, and the survey. Uh, there's just a lot of stuff that, you know, we, we really, I don't wanna say we should be better about communicating uh, because we have been managing other things, but it's also, um, worth noting. And then how do you build off of that? And I think that that's, that's a good suggestion.
And if I may, I know we have a few, at least there's a couple that I can think of off the top of my head, articles that have been funded from previous town meetings, special town meetings, that there's money just sitting. And not that we need to move forward with all those projects immediately, but if we can revisit what money is set aside for what and kind of prioritize um, a timeline for when it makes sense for the town to get moving on those or just know what's there and what the timeline to get to that point would be, um, I think would be helpful also.
Yeah, conversely to that too, I know, uh, we had, for example, at this past special, uh, looking to fund that DPW truck, Ron found money that had been sitting there from a prior project that was closed out. That was just sitting in an account that we no longer needed. So stuff like that, um, I think that we're working on tying up, but I think in, in, in inventory or or something, we need to have that conversation is, is a great idea.
Again, Mr. Chairman, one of the issues that, that I pointed out there before that special meeting, they think we set aside, I don't wanna say forty grand to look at developing some kind of study to rebuild the senior center. And I, I suggested then that we should consider using that money to fix the senior center. But that's one of those pots of money Leah's talking about that's still sitting there unused and we really need to, I think she's right, we need to reevaluate some of those and I'm making a point of trying to find more information about those kind of things and and bring it back to the board for consideration.
Anybody else for the good and the welfare? So Ron will add that, um, as an agenda item to go more in-depth next meeting, if that's acceptable to you.
Uh, that, that's perfectly acceptable. I guess I just would like to hear generally, do you guys feel like you're being kept well-informed? Do you feel like you're getting information about what's going on? I, I, I really wanna make sure that you guys generally don't feel that a citizen asks you a question, you don't have the answers. Do you, are you, am I mailing you too much stuff or are you mailing it not enough? Are you happy with the communication? I would at least like to know that tonight, if I can get some sense of that.
Lyndon, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'm still waiting for clarification on straightening out the email and access to some of the documents and stuff. Um, I, you know, I've talked to you a couple of times about that. Um, I, I really not comfortable with keeping it on my private email and I don't get access to all the documents. So I really, I'd really like that to be addressed.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, I think that that's gonna be a financial issue to some degree because we have to pay for more email addresses. Uh, you were set up with the ones with the Chromebooks, but when we evaluated that Lyndon, in order to actually get you more emails, we are gonna have to pay for that. I did not at this point budget that for next year, but maybe, you know, relook at that and put some money aside to, cause I, I agree with you completely. You shouldn't be using your own personal email. So uh, I will look at that for the budget process for July one and we'll add something in to take care of that issue.
I think the goal too, Lyndon, is to start, and, and I'm not sure, Ron, if you had, uh, run through this in your update. We're gonna be reopening, I think, the town buildings. That's the, the concept, rather shortly, because Governor Baker had lifted all of, or most of the more stringent restrictions, um, the day after the inauguration, which, you know, whatever. Uh, but the, the idea being to open the town buildings and also get back to in-person meetings. I know that I particularly found it very useful, um, to be able to go and sit with hard copies of documents prior to the meeting start to just familiarize myself with everything, rather than doing it all through, uh, the computer monitor. Um, so that Lyndon might alleviate some of that issue, um, if we start getting back to hard copy binders. Uh, for me, it's easier at least, so.
I mean, I mean, that, that did help me as well, Mitch, but you know, but it's, I, I also would like to be able to try to get them obviously prior so that I have days to, to look at some of the documents that are more complex. Cause a lot of the times I was looking at stuff literally, you know, an hour before we were discussing it, so.
So can we, can we set up maybe, uh, maybe, Ron, th- there's gotta be a way, um, outside of Google Drive to dump the documents that wouldn't be cost impactful for the board.
We, we can, I, I think that we can email a, a number of those or most of those right through the regular email system, but I think Lyndon's point is, is well made. The one that I've been concerned with as well, even prior to our discussing it, is it, none of you guys should be using your personal email, cause God forbid somebody under open meeting law could actually start questioning and asking you to open up your individual emails for public inspection and I, I just don't like that. So I think, I think he's right that we need to, uh, get those emails away from your personal emails and get them to a town email structure. Uh, as to the documents, the only problem a lot of times with shooting documents straight through your email, sometimes they're too large for email and, and it, it just kicks them back to us. But most of our documents are smaller in nature, so, uh, I think if, if you guys want, instead of getting them through Google, if you want them through regular email right now, we could accommodate you for that right now, if that's something that individual board members want. I mean, I,
Depending on, on the sensitivity of it, those deals would probably have to be, um, encrypted. Encri- encrypted if, if there's any kind of sensitive information on any of those documents. I mean, my problem is that it, my, my email isn't tying directly to the Google Doc, so I don't get access to all the docs that are in there. Um, so I, you know, I don't know what the resolution is, but I mean, it, it, it does make it difficult if I don't have the information. They try to look intelligent when people are watching.
May, maybe, quite frankly, cause I, I do agree with Lyndon that the sooner we can do that, the better. Maybe one of the things we can do is look in, is there a transfer of funds from some other account to the email account? For instance, the MMA meeting, uh, we have money set aside in MMA meetings for both us and selectmen to go to. Maybe we could stay all some money out of those accounts since the MMA was only virtual. There was some savings there. Maybe we could take some money from those accounts and use it to pay for new emails. Uh, that would be, I think, fine. I, I, I know I won't use all my, the money set aside for me, uh, in my budget for, for the, uh, meeting, so. Uh, maybe that's the quickest way to deal with it, Lyndon, is just do that transfer.
If I may, Mitch, the other option is, I know with our Chromebooks, we all have, um, like Gmail accounts assigned with our, um, Chromebooks. So I just don't know if the passwords get on the Chromebook. It's the same password for that Gmail account or not, but could that be an interim solution that we're accessing our like a second Gmail account that's actually our town Gmail account? Um, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I, I did have a problem with that, Leah, and, um, I think it was going to Mike Nicholson or, I mean, so I haven't been able to get access to that. So that's the whole problem. I had to use my, my personal email on it.
Yes, it might be an issue because if, because you're the second user for that Chromebook maybe. So if, um, I don't know, I don't think Mike Moyarty is still on, but I think he's a good IT guy and has con- the contact. Um, he's kind of like our resident IT guy, but, um, if, uh, CM Geeks or whomever, IT contractors can kind of reset um, new user, I would kind of think that would be a default in the contract or whatever that we have for the Chromebooks. I don't know.
Is, is that what the rest of the board is using right now? Is that, does everybody else have those? No?
I wanna get rid of my Chromebook. I wanna turn my Chromebook in. It doesn't, it's not compatible to the Zoom meetings and.
It's been very tough with the remote, the Chromebook and then the emails, when, when we pushed for this, like a year and a half ago, it was under the impression that everyone could get their own, like, you know, Leah at Rutland Select Board, and then the next person that was elected, you could just change the name of it and it would just, every, all the files are being transferred over. Uh, the problem you have too is that constituents, the way that the addresses are set up, they have no idea who they're sending stuff to. Um, and so I've been toggling between the two and, and because I had a separate email setup specifically for Rutland Business prior. Um, people just generally have tended to use that and not use the other, the other email address. And like Jeff said, the Chromebooks, when we transferred to this remote environment, they're only half useful. I mean, they're, you have a tough time with them.
Yeah, I wasn't, oh, sorry. I was gonna say, I use the Chromebook to access everything on the Google Drive, but for the actual Zoom, I'm on my laptop. Um, it's my personal laptop that I use, that Alex uses for school that, you know?
And even, even then, uh, through chairs, some of the, uh, the Zoom links and stuff that are sent out from the front office aren't compatible. We've had that problem with historical, uh, historical commission meeting, that Erin would set up the Zoom link, click on it, it's we'd end up having to start another fresh Zoom. I, I really think I can find money to fix that by using some internal town administrator accounts. There's no objection to me finding that money and paying it from out of a supplies account or something, or even out of my, you know, um, MMA money or something. There's no objection to that. I, I think I can fix that pretty easily.
Yeah, Ron, as far as the MMA, yeah, I, I've been doing so many virtual meetings that I, I really didn't even respond to that. I, I'm just, I don't, I'm not getting as much out of that, so that, I didn't think it was money well-spent in the virtual world right now. So I, I, I didn't look at attending those meetings.
So me and Leah did attend, um, those virtual meetings. I won't speak for Leah. I just know that it was extremely frustrating for me. You know, that I just didn't, it didn't have the, anywhere near the kind of value that those MMA meetings do have. Frankly, I would encourage that when they go to real-life meetings, as many selectmen as possible go to those meetings, cause I think they have huge benefit, but I was more frustrated than else, and frankly, staying in the office and doing it, I found it, I kept doing office work and it's my normal job and kind of fell away from the conference, which took away some value as well, so.
No, I agree. Like I said, I, I go to a lot of the conferences on, online now and it's just not as effective. And, and I do agree, it's a great meeting to go to, but not necessarily in that manner, so.
Well, I think getting back, certainly back and closing the loop, Ron, you had asked a question and I'll go ahead and just address that, uh, briefly, but I, I personally, I feel like, um, the communication has, has been positive and it's flowed uh, very effectively coming from your office. And I, you know, I feel that too was something that, that Mike was good at. Uh, so there's, there's been that continuity there in terms of, um, you know, making sure that we're apprised and abreast of, of certain issues. What I will say is that, um, having been elected chair uh, and then having that transition with Mike leaving and during, with all the issues that was going on right now. Um, there were a lot of, a lot of calls, a lot of situations that required, um, you know, management and, uh, you know, it was, it was tough for, I know Nick was putting in a lot of hours and probably a lot more than uh, he was contracted for in, in dealing with some of those things. So, um, I think some of that's been, been tempered down. I think you've done a pretty effective job in, in communicating there, but also, um, handling all the issues that have come your way. There's been a lot less that that have made it to us as a board and I attribute that to, I guess, that, that positive, um, experience and, uh, leadership style. So I don't know if anybody else wants to weigh in, um, on Ron's question. Um, if not, we can have something obviously more thorough uh, for him at the next meeting, but I'll leave it up to the board members if they wanted to add anything. Alright. So, that being said, um, we'll put that on the agenda, Ron, for the next meeting and we'll have something more thorough for you. Uh, Aaron, do we want to, just last question before we adjourn? Uh, do we want to try to send it, uh, to Ron prior to the meeting for, to give him a chance of review? And if so, um, I will suggest a, a due date to him of the fifth, which would be next Friday. That gives everyone almost two weeks to kind of put some thoughts down on paper. Get it over to Ron, gets him the weekend and a couple of workdays to take a look at it. Um, and process it before we go into a, uh, a more in-depth conversation the following Monday. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Yep, that sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
Great.
Okay, and then Ron, quick bit from Ron, but we're gonna have the opportunity for an in-person meeting, uh, the next meeting.
Well, in, in terms of the board?
In terms of the board.
So, so Mr. Chairman, I think that's entirely up to you guys. Um, you know, we still have to meet the six-foot requirements. Uh, you're supposed to end the mass and all that stuff, so, uh, I think that the board of selectmen can choose to do that if it likes and do the meetings in the library. I think it, you know, it's harder for the finance committee. It's a much, it's gonna be a larger group when we start doing the budget stuff. So we suggested it, for them, we stay in a virtual world because of the size of the meetings and I'm gonna be having, you know, in some cases, department heads and everything else coming in. So selectmen's meeting, there's not that many of you. I think if you wanna do in-person meetings, I think that's entirely up to you guys. You know, I, I think the board of health, the health agent stuff would be fine as long as you, you know, meet those requirements that are for offices. Uh, I think you're okay. You, you may wanna do two evidence, so you know, you might wanna have in-person meetings, but also have it on Zoom for any citizen that wants to plug in, cause citizens are, you know, still limited in coming into the buildings. You're right, uh, starting Monday, we're gonna open to the public. Uh, so we are doing that. At least we're opening up the, uh, annex building, the, uh, community center and DPW will be open. I'm still, uh, waiting to discuss the issue with the library as to what we can do in terms of opening a library for at least browsing. The senior centers, I told you, Mr. Chairman, I think that waits until after seniors get vaccines before we reopen that building. I don't think there's any real hurry to do that and, uh, I think that, given that the seniors are both gonna be taken care of the end of phase one and the beginning of phase two, I think staying the couple of weeks closed or whatever it is just makes a lot of sense for that. There's just too much risk with seniors to open up that building. We are, however, though, we have the new outreach, uh, person. Uh, we fill that position and that person frankly is incredibly good. Uh, and she's gonna develop the posses-nesses of reaching out to seniors because truthfully, I think that, you know, this is hard on all of us. I think all of us are struggling to be in our homes by ourselves and stuff. But, you know, it's, it's ten times worse for those seniors that are already isolated and can't, even though the seniors are. So there's gonna be a big effort, uh, from the new outlet, outreach coordinator to start developing those relations with people and hopefully when the senior center is back open, creating more programs and more activities for seniors, cause that, I think, is, is a desperate need from so many of our seniors in town. So that's moving forward. Um, and we'll be talking to you, the fire chief came to me today just for a heads up. He came to me today and, and the, the work of the health group, uh, the health agent and, and secretary and stuff is gonna increase dramatically over the next four or five months as they've been doing all these vaccines. So I don't really wanna have a full conversation about this, but he's asked me if I could bring back the recreation director, cause we need somebody to work the next four or five months at twenty hours a week or so to just do the clerical work of the vaccines. So that's something, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll call you and talk to you about. But right now that person is being paid on unemployment from the COVID money. Now they would be paid for those twenty-eight weeks to work in the health office for COVID money. So we're using the same money, but we're actually getting some production out of it if we move in that path, but I'll, I'll have more of a discussion with you offline on that and I've gotta make a decision.
Would we have to post the position?
I, I don't think so. What we would wanna do is it's a different job description for that person. So I think it's in, it's a temporary position. It's not a permanent position. So I think we have to get agreement from that person that should be willing to work and sort of the new job description for that four or five month period of time, but I don't think it needs to be posted, cause it's not permanent in nature.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Right, I just, uh, I know we've had temps in the past when we've used an agency and I, I just, in terms of the position itself, I wanna verify that we wouldn't have to post it. Uh, I just don't wanna set a precedent if we have this come up in the future.
And I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, and I actually raised the issue with the fire chief and and others about that temporary position bringing somebody in, but the cost of that seems to be extremely high to bring in those temporary agencies. I don't wanna pay somebody sixty or seventy bucks an hour for that temporary service when we can have a person who we're already paying unemployment, just take her out of unemployment and, and pay her the same money. So to me, you know, it's, it's better to, to do that, cause it, it just, we get productivity. Somebody already knows the town, can do the clerical work. Again, she has to agree to do it, but I think it just, it just makes sense. So that's probably a direction to move in. Uh, and frankly, you know, at some point, we gotta get ready to come back in the spring anyway, uh, because we gotta get the recreation program up and running as well. Uh, assuming that, you know, the COVID vaccinations are mostly in place and we can have a real recreation program. But I'm thinking we're going to. I think it, I think it, I'm hoping this summer that life comes back to somewhat normal and we could start providing some activities for children and young adults. At least that's the hope.
Okay. Alright, do we have any questions? If not, I'll maintain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Here now we'll have a roll call. Lo, Stillings? Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Clark?
Clark, aye.
And Resity, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. And Resity, aye, motion carries, unanimous. Thank you, everyone, have a good night.